Session. Julie, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Schwartz, absent. Commissioner Pujol.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Higgins.
Here.
Vice Chair Campanella.
Here.
Chair Thompson.
Here. Okay. Ms. Calarte, any announcements?
Chair Thompson, no announcements.
Any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay, the first item is comments from the members of the public on items not on the agenda, and not seeing anyone here. We don't have any speaker slips. Close that portion, move on to the first item, which is City of Santa Barbara Coastal Development Permit for the Fire Department. Okay, thank you.
Chair Thompson, Commissioners, good afternoon. As you've mentioned, the item in front of you now is a request for a CDP Coastal Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit for a fire training project proposal to locate two prefabricated steel structures that would be used for fire training purposes on the existing fire training facility site. The two fabricated steel structures with total 1,170 square feet. The project also includes onsite drainage improvements consistent with the city's Tier Three Storm Water Management Plan, and will recognize several as-built structures. As just mentioned, the project requires both a coastal development permit and a conditional use permit. The project is located within the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. We're indicating here it's adjacent to the El Estero Wastewater Treatment Plant. The reality is it is actually within the parcels that are part of the plant. This particular facility shares the parcel with the component of both the wastewater treatment plant and the desolination plant. The coastal plan designation is major public and institutional. The zoning on the side is OM1 SD3. As just mentioned, it's the project is located in the southeast corner of the wastewater treatment plant facilities. There's an inset showing the existing fire tower. Should mention too, the tower was used in the past for the hot fire training, but due to the 30-plus years of use, due to what's referred to as spalding on the interior, it can no longer be used for live-fire training. Still will be able to be utilized for ladder drills, hose drills, those type of training operations. So the structures that are coming in will be replacing the use that was already occurring on the site, but can no longer occur in that structure. The footprint of those structures. This was referred to as a Phase One prop by the manufacturer. This is referred to as the Phase Five prop. The MEA for the project indicated areas of requiring additional review were cultural resources, biological resources, stormwater runoff, and sea level rise was also addressed within the staff report. It was determined with standard BMPs, standard minimization measures, that the project would not result in any significant project-specific environmental effects, and the project has been determined to be exempt per Section 15183 of the SEQA guidelines and SEQA statute, Section 21083.3. This determination will require a finding by the Planning Commission. The local coastal plan policies applicable to the project were determined to be biological resources, visual resources, and water quality. The specific policies are described as the proposed project will improve water quality in adjacent lugen-- in this case, I should have said El Estero Drain Channel, apologize. Storm runoff from the parcel would be retained and treated on the site consistent with the city's SWMP requirements, and the project will implement the conclusion would be that the project will implement best management practices and other applicable measures to protect the city's watersheds and marine environment. Regarding views, the proposed building-- buildings, should be plural, comply with all setbacks and height limits. The project would not obstruct public views of the ocean, and the project would not obstruct public views of the mountains. So the conclusion is the project would not degrade those existing ocean or mountain views. Recommendation from staff is approval with conditions. The project would conform to the city's zoning and building ordinances and policies of the Coastal Act and local coastal plan. The size and appearance of the project are consistent with the surrounding built environment, and the project maintains the existing character and protects coastal views and marine waters. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Brad Cleansing and Chief McElroy and some additional fire staff to describe some other more specific project operational characteristics.
Chair Thompson and Commissioners, for the rest of this presentation, we'd like to do a little bit of a background, a little needs and benefits, and then we'll go through the perspectives. For the background, I'd like to turn it over to Chief McElroy and his staff.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Good afternoon, Chairperson Addison and Commissioners. My name's Pat McElroy. I'm the Fire Chief for the City of Santa Barbara. We'll give you a little background on the facility, and then I'm going to turn it over to training staff. They go into the details, and operational details of the props as we envision using them. Our training facility has been located in this area since about 1979. Previously, we were on Laguna Street as part of the old Laguna Ball Field complex, and in 1979, we moved to our current location. It's roughly one acre in area, and it consists of a four-story training tower, classroom, and various training props and supporting storage units. We're using the classroom a lot less in the past few years since the redevelopment of Station One. Most of our classroom training is now done at Station One in the EOC. It's at the rear of the station. It keeps all of our engines centrally located, rather than moving everybody down to that far end of the city. Like I said, the training site was first developed in 1979, and at that time, it was a slab with a classroom and a one-story burn room. In 1982, construction started on the four-story tower, and it was dedicated in 1983. And it operates as a multi-agency training site ever since, and so Montecito Fire, Carpinteria, Santa Barbara County Fire, Santa Barbara SWAT team have all used this as a training facility. It's the only one like it in the south coast of Santa Barbara County. Our concern, and it's a problem we've been looking at for more than a decade, is because of the spalling inside of the tower due to 30 years of burning inside of it, can no longer support live-fire training due to the structural integrity concerns it would be raised if we continued to burn. It still has a significant amount of training value, which the rest of staff will address a little bit later. The project will provide live-fire training that Santa Barbara Fire Department and surrounding jurisdictions need to have to stay current, and we would now and in the future, without this type of a change, we would have to travel outside of the city. The closest facility to us would either be in Ventura County at the Camarillo Airport or Lompoc at that new Allen Hancock Training Academy, and that would incur significant costs for us. The National Fire Protection Agency mandates annual live-fire training, and we have are currently kind of in a bind in terms of that. We had looked at the rebuild of the tower. We had an engineering study for rebuilding, and in the process of that discussion, we became aware of this other type of fire, live-fire prop, that would not involve tearing that building, tearing that tower apart. And what we're afraid is, once we start getting into it, we're going to end up with a far more expensive project than we anticipated at the beginning. So looking around at other agencies and seeing the way that they were addressing this issue is when we came across the Drager props. The training would be tailored to our Santa Barbara Fire Department needs, mainly staying current with the NFPA standards. Also, it's where we are training our rookie classes, and we're having one of the largest classes we've had in a number of years, starting in July. And so it enables people to experience what being in a fire feels like, how fire behavior works, and so we're looking at that as this is a significant addition to our training program. Chief Males will come up now. Chris is our training chief.
Good afternoon, Chair Thompson, Commissioners. My name is Chris Males. I'm the Battalion Chief in Charge of Training for the Fire Department. You'll meet Captain Pagetti in just a few minutes. Just a little bit about our tower and how it's being utilized right now. As Chief McElroy said, we can no longer support live-fire training in the tower, the four-story tower itself, but we are using that complex regularly. In 2014, so the entire calendar year of 2014, Santa Barbara Fire Department scheduled 47 training days. That's not the totality of our training. As Chief McElroy said, we do have a lot of training that happens at our main station or in other locations, but we spent roughly 47 days at the tower training. The Santa Barbara County Fire Department scheduled 13 training days. As Chief McElroy said, it's a multi-agency tower. It's the only one of its kind, and being able to train in what is really a high-rise is really important to all the departments around the area. So Santa Barbara County used it for 13 days. Carpinteria Summerlin Fire scheduled 12 training days. Montecito scheduled 14 days. And the Santa Barbara Police Department, like Chief McElroy said, their SWAT team utilizes the training facility a lot for some of their mock scenarios. Excuse me. A non-fire usage scheduled nine training days. That would be other city departments that ask to use the facility for something. It could be the K-9, the Police Department K-9 unit, for example. With the new live-fire training props, we're anticipating an additional three to five training days added per quarter. And what we mean by that is that really only about three to five more days would be added. What we do is we bring multiple companies in at one time. This is not a one-person show. This is not where one person has to go in and see the fire at any given time. We'll send a whole group in. So typically, what we'll have is two to four engines onsite with an additional one to two command vehicles or passenger vehicles onsite during this training. The material that's used inside the Drager prop is strictly Class A combustibles. That's ordinary combustibles. We don't use any flam-- or we won't be using any flammable liquids. It'll be all non-toxic materials. We're not burning anything that can be questionable for the environment beyond just wood. Although we say a training day, and that is going to be a long day, the actual live-fire training portion of it will be very small. We're looking at the Phase One prop, which is the initial fire-type activities, to be only about 10 minutes in length. And the Phase Five prop, which we'll show you, really, the burning only lasts about 15 minutes, but when you think about all of the setup required, the fire engines coming in, connecting to the hydrant, pulling their lines, going into the building, and then extinguishing the fire, you'll see that that evolution can take a long period of time, but really, it's only just a few minutes of actual live-fire that's going to be within the prop. And a long day, but we're looking at really only about four to six burns per day. The setup and takedown is the logistics is what causes a lot of time. This is, we'll just do a little show and tell on the existing facility. This is a picture taken from the entrance off of Caicedo Chavez. What you're looking at from left to right, the first building, the yellow building on the left, is the training classroom. As Chief McElroy said, we're not utilizing that as much anymore because of the Station One classroom, but typically, what we do before we conduct any kind of a drill is we go into the classroom and we talk about what we're going to be doing. So there's no surprises out on the drill. We sit in the classroom, we go over maybe a very quick PowerPoint, and then we go out and conduct our evolution out in the drill grounds. There's a couple of other buildings that you'll see there that are existing, and then there's the four-story training tower that's been onsite for many, many years. And as Chief McElroy said, it has a lot of other purposes. We can do search and rescue drills in there. We can use our aerial ladder to conduct evolutions. We do rope rescue. We use our, we can take hose lines inside and simulate a dark environment. We just can't actually light fire in it anymore. Some of the other buildings onsite, we'll look at the upper-left picture. Let's look at the vehicle in the foreground first, wondering what that car is. As I said, it's, the training tower's not just for fire. That car that's sitting there was brought in by a tow company, and that's going to be used for auto extrication. You've all heard of the jaws of life, and firefighters have to be competent and proficient with the jaws of life, so we bring cars in, and we literally tear them apart, and then the tow company comes back and picks them up. They're transient. They're just in for a week or so. We use them, and then they're picked up. You'll see a couple of other storage buildings. The largest one in the middle is a disaster cache. Keeps a lot of equipment that we normally can't house at stations. It's sitting there in case we have a major emergency. Again, referring to the upper-left picture, that one Conex box in the back right, that's what we call a confidence course. We put firefighters inside there. We close the doors, and they literally have to go through a maze with all of their equipment on and figure out how to negotiate turns and stairs and cables dangling, et cetera. So it kind of takes away the sense of sight and puts firefighters in a very dark environment. The picture on the upper right is a storage shed that contains a lot of our urban search and rescue equipment, our overflow equipment that we're not able to house at the stations, but equipment that's available to us for use when we have a major emergency. Also, there's hazardous materials, equipment, storage in there. Bottom left, that's an existing roof prop. You can see that that looks like a roof taken off a house everywhere in Santa Barbara. It's just a prop that simulates for us the concept of what's called vertical ventilation. You've seen firefighters on top of roofs cutting holes in the roof while that simulates cutting a hole in a roof with, obviously, without the live-fire underneath it. And Bradley will continue the presentation.
Thank you. Before you hear is the site plan. You can see that, other than the props themselves, we're proposing no new hardscape. There will be a considerable amount of stormwater improvements throughout the site. You can see some infiltration basins around the corners of the site. Yeah, and here's, I'll try to highlight these with the mouse here. So there's one, for example, another one there, and another one there. We've got some drainage swells as well that will help funnel the water to those drainage basins. The pad, or the props themselves will be placed on compacted gravel pads. We will anchor those to the ground as necessary to comply with the current code. There are four existing drainage inlets in the concrete pad right now. Here's those four right there. Yeah, and the next slide shows some details of those. Around each one of these drainage inlets, we are going to cut out roughly 17 and 1/2 by 17 and 1/2 foot square, and we're going to create this permeable paver section that you can see right here. This is very similar to what the city has been doing around in parking lots as far as permeable pavers. The exception with ours is that it's quite deeper to hold all the runoff from that entire pad. And the other detail that's blown up, we have the ADA parking van accessible spot that we will install. What's not shown on here, though, is we are going to add some additional parking striping to the west of that to provide at least 13 spots. Some other improvements to ensure that stormwater is not being run to El Estero. We're including an asphalt berm here to ensure that all the runoff is captured onsite. There was an existing four-inch sewer lateral that we're going to cap as well. So everything will be maintained onsite and treated. If we do get an event over that one inch and 24-hour period, then there are existing storm sewer line that can handle that. And then I will turn it over to Captain Pagetti.
Hello, Captain Pagetti, Training Captain, Santa Barbara City. Wanted to explain what each prop does. The first thing is to say we were able to do the things that we're going to do in these props in the existing building, but because of wear and tear, the two options were to rebuild, or repair, or go to a new type of prop. Not only are these more cost-effective, but they're also better, and it allows us to do more things than we can do in the existing building. With going with the two props, the Phase One prop is basically what we call a laboratory. It's where we can simulate hot, live-fire. So in the upper section there, this section here, this is where the burn happens, and we've, with the plywood, the Class A materials, we get this as hot as we can to create what we call flashover. And a flashover condition is something that we don't want to be in, in a building, because it's where the whole room flashes over, and the material in the air, the smoke, basically explode to a high temperature level that puts us in a position where it's very uncomfortable and very unsafe. So by lowering it three feet, we can put firefighters in that, in this bigger section here, and we can teach and observe what it looks like prior to that flashover going off. So as you sit here and you watch this fire get hotter and the air condense in that room, it'll roll, it'll light, and then it'll flash across, all the way across here. And because we're lower, we're able to witness that and then observe it, and hopefully, if we're in an apartment building, or a single-family structure, or a commercial building, something might key and remind us, hey, that's, we're in a very bad situation. Let's think about a different tactic. So this is where we can put 10, 12 firefighters in that lower room. We can talk about it. We can witness it. We can watch it come across, and we can learn from that in a controlled environment. Once we do that, we can move into what we're calling the Phase Five prop. And the Phase Five prop deals more in lower temperatures, but still dark situations, very smoky situations, and there's two burn rooms in this prop. There's a burn room on the bottom far left, and then on the top, second story on the left side, there's another area where we can put fire. And there, we can do everything from search and rescue to rapid intervention drills, pulling hose line, coming up with tactics, communications, ventilation. If we go in the exterior stairs, we can go in that door on the right side and go down the stairs to simulate a basement fire. We can go in from the other side, and we can wrap the hose down and up the stairs interior so that this part here is a stairwell going up, and so we can simulate a second-story fire with obstacles where we have to pull hose, through obstacles to get up the stairs, put the fire out, effect a rescue, and then bring a patient or a victim out. So that's, those are the things that we'll be able to do with these two new props.
And then next, we'll just take you around the site for some different perspectives of what it may look like, or what it will likely look like. So this is from the east entrance, the main entrance to the facility. This is on formerly known as South Olive Street, right in front of Santa Barbara Infrared. The structure here to the left would be the Phase One prop. The structure back here would be the Phase Five prop. You also notice the oleanders that were installed as part of the tower and the classroom projects. That was a recommendation during the Planning Commission process that was added to the project. This is on South Caicedo Chavez. You're standing pretty much in the intersection with the Fest Parker entryway. You can just barely notice the top of the Phase Five prop right here. The Phase One would be completely out of view. This is a very similar perspective on it, but now you're across the street. And again, you can barely just see the Phase One prop and the top of the Phase Five prop. This is from Cabrillo Boulevard and Chase Palm Park, looking towards the fire training facility. Again, you got the fire tower, as well as the new Phase Five prop. This is another vantage point from Chase Palm Park from the steps there, and again, you can't see the prop as the tower is also concealed. And so with that, we'd like to wrap up the presentation and open up for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for a very thorough presentation, and I'd say, Chief, you guys are being very good sports to put up with all these requirements, like ADA requirements for your private parking area and so forth.
I think that, you know, Chairman Thompson and Commissioners, I think that because of the fact that we do inspections, we do planning, we're part of the planning process and part of the permitting process for other facilities, I think it's incumbent upon us to play by the same rules we're asking other people to play by.
Okay, very good. Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple. Stephen, I'm looking really quick and I can find, what drives us into Tier Three? Why do they have to comply with Tier Three?
Going to the Planning Commission. That's one of the, that triggers a project.
Really? Not a very big project, and...
There, and actually, the other, if there's over 500 feet of disturbance, of hardscape disturbance, which really there isn't here, that would be the other requirement, but in this case, it was just...
The hardscape is an improvement, not a hardscape that's a debt, you know?
So, but what actually triggered on this, what triggered on this project is there's a requirement, if a project goes to PC, then it automatically triggers Tier Three.
Get my sense of annoyance there. The other question I have is just, if you answer it the other day, I couldn't be there, but I'm concerned Josh Hagamart isn't in the room. I'm just wondering about the long-term plans, because I think this property is, per se, water resources property that the Fire Department's using, and what happens when you run up against a constricted site for improvements to treatment, and we're out of space, and we're making improvements in, you know, in the real world, giving CUP vested rights to a different department in the city that restricts that ability?
Yeah, I would, I think I would really defer that to the chief to speak to as far as that particular area. I will say that these particular structures, though, if there is a need to move, will be structures that would be able to be relocated without significant work.
Okay.
As far as this project, that's what I would say, but I think the chief would probably want, I think the chief would probably want to speak to the other concern.
Chairperson Thompson and Commissioners, I did some research on this, on how that, how we actually ended up down there, and there was a swap for, with Public Works, for the land that we had on Laguna and Cota. For, to move down there in '79, because I think that's where our facility is, is where the, there's vehicle parking there now on the corner of Laguna and Cota. That was our former facility. So 1978, '79, and former Mayor Lodge would probably remember these players as well as I do, but I know Chief Peterson, and I try to think of the Public Works Director at that time was Puttichom. Yeah, and so I had, I interviewed Chief Peterson about this before, because, you know, we're looking at the long-term training needs as well, and we realize that, you know, it could change, but the beauty of these particular, as we're calling them, structures is you just load them up on a truck and haul them away. I mean, down there, there's train after train after train coming by with exactly what we're going to be putting on the ground, so they're, they are very portable.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pujol?
Thank you. Most of my questions, I think, are for staff. So, Mr. Greer, I would like just a little bit of clarification on the permitting history for the site. So we know it started up in 1979, and there's, and I know that we're doing a conditional use permit and a development plan today, and from the way I take it, this is a new conditional use permit and development plan, because I didn't have one before. So how did it come about that it has this requirement for a conditional use permit and a development plan on the site, and was there something in between? I understand the as-built part, but was there something else prior to that?
Chairman Thompson, Commissioner Pujol, my understanding is in 1979, the requirements for a use permit were not part of our ordinance at that time. I believe that's the situation. So much of what we're dealing with now are, due to changes, amendments, revision to ordinance, LCP policies that weren't necessarily in place or have changed over time.
Okay, so basically, it's non-conforming as to process, because it was there, but the requirements for the extra permitting under a conditional use permit and development plan came after the operation started.
Correct, and through this process, the way we have addressed the use permit is that while this use isn't specifically called out as an... a, while this use isn't specifically called out as an allowable use in this zone district, the use has been determined very similar to uses that would be allowed by right in the M1 Zone District. The OM1 Zone District has an allowance that with a conditional use permit, you can permit uses that are allowed in the M1. So working it actually, this will no longer be considered necessarily a non-conforming use, it will now be encompassed in this use permit to be recognized using the use permit process.
And also to clarify, one more thing kind of related. So this is half of a two-acre parcel that is part of the El Estero Treatment Properties. Is that right? So it's a portion of an accessories parcel?
Correct. The El Estero facility is made up of three parcels, this being the smallest, about two acres. About half of this parcel is being utilized for fire training, and the other half has developed with portions of the wastewater treatment plant and a portion of the D-SAL facility, their pump station for the D-SAL.
And so once they are completed with their conditional use permit and the development plan, it's just for the training facility, and they will be subject to, I mean, they'll be in control of their own permitting? It doesn't get mixed up with the El Estero, the rest of the permitting there?
Yeah, sure. You know, they're, the tertiary narration projects did require a Tier Three consistency for the entire site. During that process, though, the fire training portion was left out. The analysis was only using the areas at the facility the plant actually used, including the other half of this parcel. So, little different way of processing this, but just so that, since this was not included, this had to be brought in, so as its own sort of water plan that was addressing just their footprint.
Okay, and then I have some, so there's two things, conditional use permit and a development plan. Uses have to do with operational stuff. Conditional use permits, development plans have to do with the physical stuff. So I have, I have some questions that kind of relate to those two categories. So in the terms of uses, what I read from it is you have these full-day trainings, you have about 111 of them a year, at least you have, and then three or five more comes out to about that, I added them up. And that it's multi-agency, it's not, you know, there are other groups that can come in and use it. And one thing that I'm not sure I got from reading the staff report and the presentations, is there a permanent personnel presence there when there are no trainings occurring?
Chairperson Addison and Commissioner Pujo, no, there is, it, it's very transitory. We, people come in and train and they leave. And of those trainings, as Chief Mills said, nine to 12 a year will involve burning. So there's, there's multiple uses of, of that whole facility. But there's never, nobody keeps an office down there, nobody spends the night there. It's, it's just the train, you train it, you lock it up, and you leave.
And, and the trainings themselves, I understand the burn versus the not burned part, but the duration that a group is on-site at any one time, what's...
Chairman Pujo, usually the, we have what's called a training rotation. So to, to address coverage of the city, half of the people, half of our staff will come in the morning session, usually at nine, nine to 12.
I see.
And then the remainder of the people will come at 1:30 to 4:30, or one, one to four. And so we ensure coverage throughout the city. So it's, it's done in, it's done in shifts.
Okay, so I think you got to a couple of my questions there. So one part is, because it's only half-day sessions, you don't need, like, other services for the people that are there, like food services, or, you know, anything like that? Restroom facilities, I mean, maybe you have them, I don't know?
We have restroom facilities there, but we're kind of a carry-as-you-go group. When we come, we're used to providing our own food, our own, our own hydration and all that. So everything, if, if we, if we are there for a period of time that requires a meal, it's something we bring, bring in with us and take away with us.
Got it, like bag lunches or something?
Yes.
And then, and I think you just answered the other question I had, too. So basically, you don't do operations at night?
We, Commissioner Pujo, we occasionally will do an operation at night. We're, we're required to do some night trainings, and so, but they're very short in duration, and we use, we do them usually early in the evening. We're very conscious of other things that are going on there. Say, for example, if there was a concerts in the park, we're not likely to be doing any, any training at the same time. If there's something that impacts Calvary Chapel, an event that they have going on, we're, we try to be good neighbors in that regard, and we do notifications to the neighbors.
Ah, I was going to ask that, that's very good. And, and do you need any sort of specialized lighting for those night exercises?
We, that's another, other thing that we bring in. It's, it simulates, we simulate what we have to do when we go to, say, a structure fire. One of the first things we do is cut the power to, to the building that's involved, to reduce the chance of electric, electrocution, or a gas leak, or something like that. So the first thing we do is shut off utilities. Because of that, we bring our own lighting, mobile lighting that's run off generators off the truck.
As you would, if, if it was a real circumstance.
If it was a real, as if it was a real incident. But we don't have permanent outside light standards as part of that facility.
Okay, and in those cases, then you also send notices out in case there's, you know, because you'll be having a lot of unexpected activity perhaps at night that you don't usually have.
And, and usually what we're doing is we, we notify our dispatch center, so any calls that they take.
Got it.
And, and, and believe me, more and more, you'll, we'll have, we've had drones flying over and wondering what's going on. We've had, you know, we show up on Ed Hat right in the middle of one of our drills, so...
Great, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're, for, for an out-of-the-way place of the city, we get, we seem to get a lot of attention.
Okay, okay. That's actually, seems like a pretty good system. Okay, and then, one more on, on the use part of it. Does, would this site, is it registered or qualified, would it ever be used also for some sort of, like, emergency wildfire staging, or some other emergency staging area? Is that true of all of the Fire Department sites that you're automatically, would also have, you know, be doing that as well if it need be?
Commissioner Pujo, I can, I can, I can imagine that being done, but in 34 years with the department, I can't recall it ever being used. If, if you're asking me if they're, in, in some circumstance that became a critical site for us to stage at, we would do so, but in all the wildfires I've been on in the city, it's never been used for that. It doesn't have the type of logistical support you'd, you'd need, you'd imagine for an extensive base. You want to, you want to have access to fuel, you want to have access to perhaps showers, place for people to sleep, and it just doesn't, it doesn't fit that alongside a railroad track.
Okay, all right. So from what I heard on that part, just to say, I, I find the project description lacking in terms of representing the operational conditional use permit part of the permit. And so I would like to see something added into the project description that actually says what it is. It's multiple agents, agency, the, you know, average number of training days over time, you know, that would be expected. Especially the multiple agency part, because I think, just think it's important to recognize that it's not one agency using it that you might be drawing in from other, sounds like at times maybe even regional or non-fire-related agencies like police and whatnot. So that's one, one thing I would like to see when I make my comments. But under the development plan, one of the things that, you know, was kind of noticeable when we went on our site visit, were a lot of the cars that you use, you know, for emergency jaws of life, or whatever, you know, maybe you burn them, I don't know. But there's, there's several of them on the site now. But I was reading in the conditions of approval that there would be at least no recreational vehicle storage, but are those cars always there? You, you mentioned you would tow them away, but there's a several, I don't know how many, but 10 there right now or something.
Commissioner Pujo, what we do is we, we, as part of the contracts that the Police and Fire Commission has with the regulating the taxi, or the, the tow truck companies, we're allowed, they, they are to supply us a number of cars per year. So when we're about to do a training involving extrication, we call them and have some cars delivered. The training happens, and then they're taken away. So you, you could come down there and have no cars there, and that would be the case far more often than not. So they're specifically brought there for specific training, and then they're taken away.
And then they're taken away. So is that the case? You are just planning one now, or you just had one or something? Is that why those cars are?
Yeah. Yeah. Montecito Fire Department was running their Recruit Academy, and so they were brought down there to teach the new firefighters how to use jaws of life and simulate, simulate rescuing a victim out of a crashed car.
Okay, got it. And then I have one more question. And by the way, one of the things I probably would like to see added in is that you, basically what you just described that you do with those cars, as well as the recreational vehicles. Because there is a condition about recreational vehicles, but these were just cars. Okay, so my last question has to do with landscaping. So do you have a landscaping plan? Has that been reviewed for that? And, and, and one of the questions I have, and maybe this is better for Mr. Greer to answer right now, I, I know that there is landscaping plan for El Estero. One of the things that I was looking at, it showed up in some of those photos, the oleanders are great, I like that, but it seems like a lot of the fence is completely bare of any vines or, or anything, and you can see that in, in some of the photos.
Yeah, we actually, and I have it in my hand here, but we have the approved landscape plan from 1981. And part of what included in the approved, the ABR review was to come back and make sure that the, the holes that were in place today are filled in, and that the landscape plan was adhered to that was previously approved, which includes screening along the entire fence, those...
Good job. Okay, great, thank you. Those are my questions.
Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. One question on the parking, the, I believe there's 13 parking spots that are being provided. The parking is being provided outside of the, of the training area, is that correct? Or is, I don't see, well, where's, where's that located? Okay. Is it part, where would it be located on the plan that we...
If you're talking about, is it in the area of this project, the footprint, no, the, the proposed area for additional striping, I think we could probably pull it up on the site plan while the, and I think Brad could show you with his cursor, the, what is showing the depiction of the handicap spot.
Okay.
And then the additional 12 parking spaces will run parallel, running to the west of that space.
Okay, thank you. I missed that. I just wanted to be sure that if it was off-site, if there was some other use that the plant needed, that you wouldn't be precluded your parking for some reason in the future. But you control your parking as well, it's within the, the training facility. I wanted to make sure of that. Thank you for pointing out where it is. Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz, brief questions?
I have one question, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Greer, I was wondering regarding parking, I'm looking at both Page Four, the staff report, the required, existing, proposed, is a follow-on to Mr. Campanella's question. Then in the conditions of approval on Page Two of Seven, under design review, the section entitled Parking, some of this language, well, this language, parking for a total of 13 vehicles, et cetera, doesn't pick up some of the detail related to the parking requirement that you have described on Page Four of the staff report. So let me go to Page Four of the staff report. So it says, "Staff recommends the condition of approval. The applicant provides striping for an additional 12 vehicles in the paved area west of the van-accessible stall to formalize the parking on-site." Now, in your opinion, is, is this level of specificity, in your opinion, not needed in the conditions of approval? Because this phrase, in the paved area west of van-accessible stall to formalize the parking on-site, is not embedded in the conditions of approval? So it is in the staff report, but it's not in the conditions. Do you, can you share your thoughts with me about that?
Because of the nature of the project and how we have, it's, we're working with the facilities, I don't think there's an issue, and we know they're going to be placed where they need to be placed, but certainly you've, you've pointed out that we could certainly add to the condition of approval a little more specificity.
Specificity, yes. We're on the same track. Thank you. Thank you, that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, okay. Any, Commissioner Jordan?
I'd be happy to make a motion, but first, Mr. Greer, I just want to give, you're hearing questions about parking, and you just cracked me up because you fell down to the developer mindset there in your parking paragraph, where you said parking has never been an issue. I can tell you, any one of you guys with a uniform on want to come over and park in my driveway, you can park there anytime you want, there's never going to be an issue, okay? And it just, I don't, I don't really think that's a problem.
Yeah, and I think I should point out, too, generally, when the training is occurring, they're coming in on their equipment, they're coming in on an engine, but not to say there is times where you may have an operation that brings in folks in their own vehicles, but I think generally speaking, we're, we're meeting the requirement based on the ordinance, though it is unlikely that those parking spaces will need to be utilized on a regular basis. I think that would be correct.
You don't mean to infer that they would actually park their fire trucks across the white line?
So, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to move to approve the project, making the findings for, as outlined in the staff report for the environmental review, the development plan, the conditional use permit findings, the conditional permit use, and the coastal development permit, and subject to the conditions of approval that detail the development plan, conditional use permit, and coastal development permit. That's the extent of my motion. I know down at the end of the table, there's probably going to be some more discussion, but I'm willing to just adopt this as it is in front of us.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Discussion on the motion. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I don't know if you were going to allow just general comments after we take a vote.
No, we'll take discussions on the motion.
I'd like to make a couple of comments to the Fire Department if I may, but I am going to support the motion. So you just let me know when it's appropriate to make those.
Go ahead.
Okay. First, I want to say, I think it's so, it's a compliment to the department and to the city in general that we, and I think this is important for the public to know, because I'm guessing they don't understand how many other agencies have access to and benefit from our real estate, from our resource. Well, I will count this up from the slide you showed, Chief McElroy. 95 days total, of course, the city uses the bulk of those, but between the county and CARP, uh, uh...
Thank you. I won't go back. The county, CARP Summerlin, Montecito, and even our own Police Department, this is clearly a shared resource, even though it's owned by the city. So I wanted to acknowledge that, and I think it's important, the public understand how we're making our training facility available. That was one comment I just wanted to acknowledge and have on record. Did you want to say anything, Chief McElroy?
Commissioner Schwartz, it's, it's really critical for us, because when, when we get something big in this area, and we get things big regularly, that we are communicating with the agencies that we're going to be responding with, and we're training with them as well. And while we may train down there for a, a structure fire or a vehicle accident, the communication that we do there would be shared when we're on a wildfire, whatever type of incident we're on, we're getting to know each other, we're getting to work with each other, and it's, it's really something that all the local agencies have worked on. Certainly during the course of my career, I've seen a great improvement in the way we interact with each other, and, and this facility is a real key to that.
Thank you so much. I also want to acknowledge that, you know, beyond the paperwork that we have, being at the site on Tuesday, really brought home to me the compelling need to upgrade this site in so many ways. And it's not just that we have an unpermitted, I think, accessory structure, et cetera, but I, I think it was to Mr. Pagetti's point, that we can no longer use this four-story tower for hot fire, fire training. I mean, that's just not acceptable. So I'm so pleased that we're doing this now, and I think probably some of my fellow Commissioners are going to make other comments. So in general, thank you so much, and I'm really pleased that we're doing this. The public at large is going to greatly benefit from this. You're helping to keep our community safe, thank you for all you do, and I will be supporting the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Pujo?
Thank you. So yes, I do have a couple of comments based on above that I think improve the permit for its, basically what is deficient right now, and that is, there's no description of the use, it's just a description of the structures, and this is a conditional use permit. Typically, you say what the use is. So, and also I do think that it is a benefit to the project to do two things, and I can narrow it down to two things, because it looks like the others are taking care of themselves. But one is, we need to recognize that it is multiple, a multi-agency facility... But one is, we need to recognize that it is multiple, a multi-agency facility. Otherwise, there might be a case where you're actually, have to get into several discussions about why other agencies besides yours are using it. So I think that would be a benefit to you. And also the good neighbor policy of continuing to notice or respond to neighbors, which you are already doing, both of those, I think, are very simple to do, and I would request that, and to your benefit, clearly. And I would request that the motion maker and secondor consider adding those two to the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion on Commissioner Schwartz?
Mr. Chair, I have a question back to Ms. Pujol. On the good neighbor policy, and maybe this is back to staff, you know, I don't know to what extent we want to embed, is an open question, embed in conditions of approval references to policies that exist elsewhere. I think we continue to wrestle with this. As a commission, we have good neighbor policies elsewhere in our city documents, so maybe, I don't know if Ms. Galarte or Mr. Greer would want to comment on that. Or Ms. Pujol, did you want to maybe expound on your thoughts there?
Mr. Chair? Yeah, just clarify, I'm not talking about a printed document or set of comments that we have used that are entitled good neighbor policies. I'm just saying it has been there, practice already, to be a good neighbor in making sure they respond to calls if somebody notices something going on and notifying certain events that you have been already, I think you mentioned, is it Unitarian? No, I'm going to church, some of that, Calvary Church, but not. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about a set of good neighbor policies that we have documented elsewhere.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Pujol, do you think something along the lines of the project will be required to continue with past practice of notifying surrounding uses when an operation is occurring that may have an impact, something along those lines?
Well, I would probably shorten it up a bit, yeah, just, but leave it off at the past practice of notifying neighbors, yeah.
Commissioner Jordan?
So, in general, I'm not in favor of doing anything to this that restricts the flexibility of the fire department to do what they think best at the time in regards to fleshing out what would be on a CUP. It may be multi-jurisdictional today, it may not tomorrow. I think the reason the CUP doesn't speak to the details such as that is because their mission and their tactics change. And the CUP becomes a, almost a wedge that then somebody who's got an issue with the fire department or their training to then make a complaint and have some validity. I don't mind the language I just heard about notification. I think, I think that's vanilla enough that lets you make an attempt to notify somebody, and if you still have to do your training and they still have to have their event, we're not precluding you from doing your training. But that, that would be the only type of language I would be willing to alter on my motion.
Are you including that in your motion?
The way I just heard Mr. Greer say is okay. The further, the further, the further explanation of more of an operational set of language to the CUP, I wouldn't be in support of, but maybe we should just do a straw poll on the original motion and the language of notification and just see if there's.
Well, if you're adding that, if you're willing to add that into your motion, would the secondor be willing to add it into the motion?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? I'm just wondering if this would be precedent setting, so I don't know if Mr. Vincent and/or Ms. Galarte would like to comment so that we're both educated as well as the fire department and the public on embedding allowance, you know, or use outside of city use, but actually embedding it in conditions of approval. Would you advise for or against, and has this, have we done this elsewhere, Mr. Vincent?
I believe that the amendment to the motion had to do with notifying neighbors when events were going to occur, not anything to do with.
Yes, and I'm asking about Ms. Pujol's other request for the change to the conditions of approval, so.
Well, that's not a part of the motion at this point.
I'm trying to be respectful and responsive of what Ms. Pujol requested be included, so I haven't heard any other commissioners even ask about the appropriateness of it. So I'd like to hear from our assistant city attorney on that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is the only fire department training facility the city has. We have, in practice, by agreement with other fire agencies, allowed the use of this facility for as long as I've represented the fire department, which is in excess of 12 years. I would say that that's the continuing practice. I think that it would not be particularly offensive to the permit to identify this as a fire training facility available to the city fire department and other agencies at the fire chief's discretion.
Okay.
Perfect. As long as that's as far as it goes.
So Commissioner Jordan, as the motion maker, you approve of the language that Mr. Vincent just, and as the secondor also.
Yes.
And does Commissioner Pujol like that motion, that language?
Yes, that's fine. I think that represents exactly what I was looking for.
Okay. And Commissioner Schwartz, is that okay with your?
Yes, thank you.
And Commissioner Higgins, you had indicated you wanted to say, you changed your mind. Okay. Any other comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. You have approval. It's appealable to the city council within 10 calendar days. Thank you very much. Next item is 3425 Sea Ledge Lane, a request for an amendment to an existing coastal development Okay, while we're getting everybody changed around there, Ms. Broaddus, are you giving the staff report?
Yes, Commissioner, Chair Thompson and commissioners. Kelly Broaddus, Assistant Planner with, yeah, it is, Assistant Planner with Community Development. The project I'm proposing today is an amendment to a coastal development permit for an ongoing construction project located at 3425 Sea Ledge Lane in the A1 Single Family Zone, the Hillside Design District, and the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. Here's a slide showing the aerial photo to describe the site. The Sea Ledge Lane is a private road stemming off of Cliff Drive. In a single-family community comprised of several homes situated on a local terrace formed by an ancient landslide. The project is a 17,490 square foot lot located near the end of Sea Ledge Lane. So if you see here, I'll just use my pointer, and here's going north on Cliff, and then you'd make a sharp turn onto Sea Ledge, and the project site is the second-to-last home on Sea Ledge Lane. This proposal is an amendment to the recent coastal development permit approved on May 2nd, 2013, and revised on August 8th, 2014, which approved a remodel and a two-story addition to an existing one-story residence. On May 2nd, the planning commission approved a coastal development permit for the remodel and second story. And the project consists of one- and two-story additions, a 450-square-foot basement, replacement of the garage, and a 220-square-foot carport, and the approval of a 1, a 1,200-square-foot as-built deck and an above grand spa. And then in August 2014, staff approved a Level 2 substantial conformance determination which eliminated the basement, revised the floor plan, roof plan, relocated the garage to the west side of the house, and minor increases to the footprint. And although there was minor increases in the first floor footprint, the substantial conformance determination resulted in an overall reduction of net floor area. Also, the design review board approved both of those designs. So the construction of this new pool requires specific construction measures, including the retaining wall and caissons. And at the site visit, some questions came up regarding the stability of the existing retaining wall, which I don't have a good picture of that retaining wall because it's basically buried, but it is here along the left side of this slide. And you can see to the right, here is where the proposed pool would go. This house is, was the previous house that has now been remodeled and added on to. So to provide a little bit of history on that existing retaining wall, during the rainy season of 1998, there was a slope failure on the project site. A site visit was conducted, and the building inspector observed soil and mud had given away and settled further down the slope on the same property. The remedy to this situation involved remodel of, removal of three existing pipe and plank planter walls along the sloped portion of the property and construction of two retaining walls that exist today. The primary retaining wall was, let's see, 105 feet long with 20 to 40 deep caissons and tiebacks. And a secondary 85-foot-long red wood retaining wall was placed down slope about eight feet away from the concrete wall. During the review process for this retaining wall, geologic and engineering information were provided to staff and planning commission to assess the proposed wall. Both the engineering geologist and the soils engineer assessed the site and concurred that the improper drainage allowed winter rainfall to saturate the fill soils, which was most likely the trigger for that slope failure at that time. These two new retaining walls were not intended to stabilize the sea cliff, but were engineered to stabilize the yard on the property and protect the existing residents from possible future damage resulting from erosion of the descending slope. It is also important to know that staff evaluated the proposal to determine if an emergency coastal development permit was, would be required at that time, and it was determined that there was no immediate danger to the existing house, so they didn't do it under an emergency coastal development permit. Here again is a slide, this is the previous house on site, and it's shown the existing retaining wall. As you know, the general and local coastal plans strive to eliminate or reduce hazards created by bluff loading and drainage-related issues, which contribute to bluff erosion and undercutting of the slope. This project is relatively, is a relatively level area situated between an uplifted terrace towards Cliff Drive to the north and a neighboring residence, 3407 Sea Ledge Lane, to the south. So you can hear here, you see here where 3427 Sea Ledge Lane is. To the north is Cliff Drive with some houses up along Cliff Drive, and to the south is 3407 Sea Ledge, which is right on the ocean bluff. The house pad is supported by a concrete beam and retaining wall, as I said, near the top of the slope, just south of the existing retaining wall, or sorry, residence. And the topography continues to slope down from the retaining wall with dense vegetative cover to meet the house pad of the adjacent property to the south. So normally, local coastal plan states that new development on the sea bluff shall be placed at such a distance away from the edge of the bluff that normal rates of erosion will not seriously affect the structure of the lifetime. And we consider 75 years as the normal lifetime of a structure. The geologic investigation for the recent two-story addition determined that the top of the bluff, as it pertains to this site in particular, is right here where the aforementioned retaining wall is. So in this case, you don't have a normal coastal bluff area acting as top of bluff. You have this large retaining wall that was installed in 2000. Because there is a retaining wall on site, and there's also an existing residence between the existing house and the proposed, the ocean, and there's also the added benefit of a rock reventment, the rate of retreat due to wave attack and erosion for this property is basically zero inches per year, based on the geologic evaluation. So the, based on the observations of the site immediately to the west, which is 3427 Sea Ledge Lane, that does not have a retaining wall or a house before it, when the original CD application, CDP application was approved, the geologist recommended just an additional 15-foot setback from the retaining wall for habitable structures only. So now we have this request to add a pool and a spa, and that would require us to amend the CDP for that, original CDP. And staff requested additional analysis to address this addition of the pool and spa and its effect on the retaining wall. A geologic investigation prepared by Adam Simmons dated April 14th, 2015, stated that the proposed pool will not impact the stability of the slope since the pool is to be placed behind an existing caisson-supported retaining wall. So I keep forgetting to use my slides, sorry. The geologist recommends that the new pool be constructed with its own self-supporting caisson foundation design and not tied to the existing retaining wall or proposed addition. The proposed structural design of the pool includes five drilled piles, four for the pool and one for the spa. The caissons should extend below the depth of the existing retaining wall that's on site. The use of tiebacks along the northern perimeter of the foundation should be considered, and the caissons for the southern perimeter of the pool should be spaced appropriately to create independent support for each pile. This spacing should reduce any potential for foundation interference between the two structures and provide additional lateral strength for the deeper underlying earth material supported behind the caissons yet below the grade beams. I'll let the geologist, Adam Simmons, discuss more about the weight of water in relation to soil and that type of stuff. The geologist also recommended installing a French drain system below the proposed pool, and the French drain system, or the French drain should exit, will exit a visible down slope location so that any potential future pool seepage could be spotted and mitigated to minimize the saturation of the soil. Regarding drainage and water quality, both the previous drainage report and the water quality improvements would not change as a result of this project. As I said, the new French drain is located beneath the pool, and the sole purpose of this French drain is for detection of pool leaks. Design review also reviews this, reviewed this pool, and they found it was consistent with the surrounding area and the single-family residential neighborhood. And in that, in conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project, subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and making the findings in the staff report. The applicant's team is here. Alicia Harrison is the agent, and Jaco Habra is the property owner, Adam Simmons is geologist. We also have Andrew Stuffler here, who is the building official. And I would like to make two corrections that I noticed, you might notice additional ones. One is on the conditions of approval, I should correct the date to say June 11th, both in the header and on the first page. And also, one of the conditions of approval regarding the holiday construction was intermittently left out, and I'd like to go ahead and add that back in. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and available for questions.
Okay. The applicant team have a presentation? Welcome.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners. My name is Alicia Harrison. I'm a land use planner with Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, and I'm here today on behalf of Jaco Habra, the owner of the property at 3425 Sea Ledge Lane, in relation to proposed pool and spa project. We also have here the rest of our project design team, Adam Simmons, our engineering geologist, Tom Henson, and Peter Becker of Peter Becker Architects Office, and Alan Cooper from Pentato Pools, and John Altman is our structural engineer, but he actually is not here today. But as you know from your staff report and plans and Ms. Broaddus' presentation, there are a lot of technical aspects to this project, and so our team is here to answer whatever questions you might have to help you understand the project. So I'm going to try not to be too redundant with the overview that Ms. Broaddus gave, but this is just the project location map. So as you know, this project's located on Sea Ledge Lane, which is a private lane that serves eight residences. The Habra property is shown with the red star on the map, and it is at the end of Sea Ledge Lane off of Cliff Drive, and there's one property beyond, beyond the Habra property that's accessed beyond the property. Site characteristics, I think Ms. Broaddus covered, we know that the site, from your site visit, that the site is under construction from a CDP that was approved in May 2013 and then revised in 2014, and she explained the square footage and changes that happened related to that. And she also detailed that the existing improvements are two retaining walls, two retaining walls on the property, and then there's also on the, on the lower bluff property, there's a rock reventment at the toe, and then also the lower residence below the Habra property. So all of these factors were taken into consideration by Mr. Simmons, the project engineering geologist, when he deter- geologist, when he determined that the sea cliff retreat and measurement is actually, has been zero feet over the last, as he mentioned in his letter, 48, 48 years. So there's been a zero measurement of, of erosion and cliff retreat on this particular property. And he identified the existing upper retaining wall that was approved and constructed in the late 90s as the top of bluff on this particular property. But to be conservative, also as Ms. Broaddus mentioned, he designated a 15-foot setback for habitable structures during the CD, the house CDP process. And during that process allowed that the spa and the existing as-built deck were okay and then as part of this proposal has updated his letter to allow that a pool is also an acceptable structure within that 15-foot habitable setback. So here is the, the site plan that you have in front of you, hopefully a large size as well. And so you're familiar now, so this is the, this is Sea Ledge Lane, the access road that comes in and the driveway that continues down to the neighboring property, this existing footprint of the house. And then there's one, it's, you know, the lines are faded, but the, the upper retaining wall which represents the top of bluff is actually right here and then the lower retaining wall is shown right here. And so the project includes the pool, which is shown in blue. It's a, a small 35-by-10-foot pool, six-foot deep maximum, saltwater pool. And there's the spa at the, the west end, which is a seven-by-seven spa. And then there's the pool equipment that's obviously associated with the pool and the spa is going to be located over here along, along the access driveway and that will be screened by vegetation, sweet bay hedge, just to, to screen along that driveway. And also associated with the pool, there's safety fencing you can see in, in yellow along the eastern and western boundary sides. Because of the steepness, the slope, steepness of the slope on the descending portion of the property down to the beach, there's no need to have a new fence, protective fencing that goes across there because it's too, too steep for people to, to get into that area. So, but we are proposing, you know, a three-to-five-foot extension of the fence down both sides just to make sure that no one can get around the fence and get into the sides, get in or get out, I guess. And so, and that will be five-foot in height, vinyl coated black chain link fence. There's also the deck which is primarily over in this area, shown in this shaded tan color. And that was approved as part of the CDP that we're amending was an as-built deck, it was there, was determined to be rotted while, under construction of this project, a big portion of this was rotted. So we're proposing to replace that in its existing, the footprint that existed with this one small extension right here that would wrap around near the spa. We're also proposing two trees right here that are called Potocarpus racellia. And if you have, if you want more information about what those are exactly, you can talk, we can bring the architect up and talk about those. But there's, will be no vegetation removal on the bluff. So given the location of this site, the, the project was designed sensitively to this hillside coastal bluff property with special care to address the stability, the drainage, safety measures for, for leaks and just protections in the pool and to not adversely affect the existing condition, which is namely the retaining wall. And how we did this, which Ms. Broaddus discussed, is by designing the pool on its own independent, self-supporting caisson foundation system so that all the weight of the pool structure is on its own independent foundation system that doesn't interact with the existing retaining wall system and its existing caisson system. So there'll be two completely independent systems that will further stabilize that backyard portion of the, of the property. And the other thing that we, the other factor, and we'll have the engineering geologist and architect talk about this more later too, is that the pool water is approximately half the weight of the soil that is actually there right now. And even when you factor in the caissons and the pool structure, the calculations that we have are that still, still the weight is, the weight of the material that's being added is still less than the weight of the material that is being removed. So overall, it's a reduction in the overall weight of, on this coastal bluff top property. But like I said, so we do have the architect and the engineering geologist here that can provide more of the technical explanation of calculations for whatever you need to know and want to understand related to that. It's a steel reinforced pool, which basically means that the steel from the caissons and coming up forms, it basically becomes the walls of the pool structure. So instead of the pool being on more of like a tabletop platform that it's just underneath the pool, it actually comes up around the pool to securely lock it in place if there were to be any movement around the structure. And it's designed with double, a double-thick pool floor and thick walls as well to reduce, you know, the potential for, for cracking in the pool. And then there's also concrete or a sealant on the, it's actually shotcrete, but shot, the pool will be shotcrete and there will be a sealant to waterproof those walls. So if there are little small cracks and things that do appear, that sealant helps to reduce any potential leaking. And then cardboard expansion joints underneath the pool are also to, all these things are to reduce the potential for cracking on the pool. So if there's cardboard expansion joints, even if there is a little shift or movement in, in the earth around the pool, it, the, the pool is protected from cracking in that situation. So this just gives you the overall, the, the section of the pool. So you can see the spa at this end and then the deep end is over towards the east, the east end of the property. And you can see, so we, it's on five caissons. There's one under the spa and there's four under the pool, evenly spaced and distributed to distribute the weight of that pool structure across the property. And again, adjacent to, but spaced from the retaining wall so that all the weight of this pool is on that self-supporting caisson system and separate from the retaining wall. You can also see on this structure, I mean, on this, on this drawing, underneath it is what we're going to talk about, the French drain system that was recommended by the engineering geologist that runs all the way along the bottom of the pool. And you can see on this section view, you can see the French drain pipe. And essentially, this is, you know, one of the design features that we've incorporated into the project to detect, you know, in the unlikely case that there is a failure of the pool, this would be in place to detect any water, any water, any seepage that could possibly happen with this pool would be directed into this French drain system and then there'd be an outfall location that's gravity-fed at the far end of the property so that someone like Adam Simmons or another professional can come and check on a regular basis to see if there's any water there. And if there is, then that would be addressed accordingly. And the French drain would have a impermeable protective membrane like a stego wrap or other kind of material that would ensure that no water is getting, if water were to leak, that no water would actually be getting beyond that barrier, that it would be collected in that French drain system. And again, at a visible location that can be detected and addressed. As part of the existing CDP and also, you know, what this property owner is trying to achieve is no water onto the, onto the bluff face. So also built into the pool is a, is a six-inch coping to avoid sloshing onto the bluff top. And there's also built into the, into the pool plan, there's a cover box cover drain. So if there is a significant storm event and the pool were to fill higher than its set level, that water would actually spill over into the cover box cover drain, it wouldn't go over the top. And that ties into the existing drainage system on the site. The fill of the pool would be, the water fill of the pool would be controlled because it would be brought in by, by a water truck. And if water needed to be removed, that would also be by truck, would need to be pumped out. If at any time the pool is connected to city water, then at that point, we could activate an auto fill and, and an auto shut-off alarm so that there wouldn't be the, you know, potential overflow due to, you know, manual error. And just for information, there's an automatic built-in pool cover as well. This is just the diagram, the plan view of the pool which shows the, this is, so spa and pool and then this is the cover drain, cover box. And so any overflow that would in this pool, that would be in the pool would go into this area, which would then be connected to the site drainage system. And this gives you an idea, so the, there was an extensive drainage collection system that was approved as part of the house CDP. It includes 11, well, well, I'm not sure what the original number is, but this plan that we have has 11 drop inlets. The only change, oops, the only change is that it used to go along a bioswale along the retaining wall here, but now it just wraps around the pool structure, but there's, there's a drop inlet here, 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 I mean, all the way around and then goes into right here, which is a bio-retention filter that slows down, filters the water, slows it down before it exits onto the driveway and down to the two storm drains that take to the beach as this property and the larger watershed area have historically drained. And, and then I also wanted to note on here that this blue line shows where the French drain is underneath the pool. So it's on a totally different system than the site drainage system because it's under the pool and only detecting if in the case there is, unlikely case that there's a pool failure, but it would be able to be identified at the outfall location. And the important comment that I want to make too about this is that the pool has a beneficial feature in that it, it acts as like a detention or retention, detention area for storm water, or storm water. For during large storm events, this, the 400, 350 square foot pool is taking the place of what would have been soil on the site that would have had opportunity in a large storm event would percolate into the soil. And now, right now, or as with the proposed pool, it would actually be held in that pool and then regulated and slowed as it enters into the system and then through the bio-retention planter and then down into the storm drains. So it actually is another, another beneficial feature in terms of reducing the area of percolation on this bluff top property and regulating the, the flow and the amount of water that gets into the, to the drainage system. So I think I've covered the rest of those points and so I'm concluding, but I believe Peter Becker wanted to make a few comments just up front about the calculations of the weight, the water versus soil and the structure. And then of course, if you have any other further questions, we've got the team here to answer them for you. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Becker?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I just want to make another kind of a passing comment as well. The day that you came out and did a site visit, I happened to talk with the owner of the house below and I told her that I would definitely, in her position, be wanting to know that these numbers were going to be correct. And I was also reminded, strange enough in this small town, that I used to work for the guy who saved her house, a guy named John Carter, very famously would drill caissons down and, and save houses that were falling down. A few years later, after he famously saved that house, I worked for him and I know from personal experience of putting this steel in and pouring the concrete, that, that these things, when they're done correctly, really do work. And even still, when I was working for John Carter, the hardest worker ever in my life, it's the kind of thing that sent me off to becoming an architect. We never really reduced the weight, but in the process of doing this, we're actually reducing the weight on the hillside. And so the numbers, Commissioner Lodge requested that we get not just the pool water numbers but the, the, the structure numbers come out to, we're reducing, the amount of soil that we'd be taking out would be 205 tons. And the amount of water and structure that we'd be putting back would be 182 tons. So we would be coming back with 23 less tons than is there right now. And I just wanted to make the point that the structure is, of the, of the water versus the structure, the structure is around 89 tons, you know, of that 182. And it's kind of hard, it's kind of subjective, but it's kind of hard to classify the structure in the same way you're going to talk about just dead weight that you're adding to a hillside because it's actively holding the thing up. So like, if I was to, you know, put some tie-downs into a cliff to save a building, I would hardly ever be thinking of the weight of those tie-downs. I mean, they're doing so much active work. But however you might look at it, we are saving 23 tons total. So I've known this business from the actual doing it to now the supervising of it. And so there's so many more people on our team that know more than I do, but I just wanted to point out that I knew this was an extremely sensitive site. And we've put together, I think, a team of the best people that I could find in Santa Barbara. And so for, and looking at their numbers and working with them, that I am in the position of saying that I, I think these are accurate and I know from firsthand experience that when it's done right, it does work and, and I think would be actually helping the situation. So I'll let you talk to people that know more about the details than I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You might want to stick around close by there for questions. Is there any other speakers from the applicant team?
Mr. Chair, no, we were just going to have them here for questions.
For questions, okay. Thank you. Well, Mr. Becker, you might want to come up. It's interesting that Commissioner Lodge was thinking along the same lines I was and that's the reason I asked Adam, Andrew to be here. In all the documents we got and the plans, much is made about water weighs less than the soil that's going to be removed. Soil weighs, I don't know, 75 to 120 pounds of cubic foot. Water weighs 63 pounds of cubic foot. Reinforced concrete weighs almost three times what water weighs. So that got me concerned when I ran the calculations on one of those caissons, two-and-a-half feet, 40 feet deep, comes out to be over seven cubic yards of reinforced concrete at over 4,500 pounds per cubic yard. And that's a lot of weight. And nothing exists in any of the documents we got talking about that kind of weight. It was all, water weighs less than dirt, so therefore you're good and, and a pool is good. So that's why I thought we needed to have a little more discussion about the total weight and include everything that's going to go up on that bluff. Normally, we would not even be talking about putting a pool at bluff edge. So everything is based upon this special structure and, and how it's going to work. So is my, are my numbers wrong for the weight of the reinforced concrete? It seems to me that...
Tom Henson in my office is, is the arch, project, he's also a very good structural engineer, so he can answer that.
Okay.
Your numbers are right, it's just, your numbers are right. It's just that you also subtracted out the weight of the earth that the concrete's displacing, so it comes out to a fraction of that. But still, the vast majority of the volume of the pool, well, maybe 80% of the volume of the pool is water. So that more than compensates for the fact that concrete weighs more than soil. If it were, if it were half concrete, half water, then we'd be closer, but since most of a pool is water and a fraction of the pool is concrete, we still come out about 20 to 40 tons a head or less.
So when you did your calc's, you used the actual volumes, we're not just roughing it in, you used the actual volumes of the thickness of the walls and the double thickness of the base of the pool and all that?
Absolutely.
And your, your calc's, which we didn't, we weren't privy to, show that you're going to be saving roughly, what was it?
I think it's 20, around 20 tons.
About 20 tons from what was originally removed.
Yes. And that's if you include the caissons. If you don't include the caissons, because that would be, the caissons stabilize the, the hill, so...
They stabilize the pool, but they add weight down at the base of the caisson.
That's true.
All that weight goes to the base.
And Adam can speak to this more than I can, but if there were to be a fail, a failure, it would be well above the base of the caissons. So the, the weight at the base of the caissons doesn't hurt and if you wanted to stabilize the hill, adding those, the five caissons would stabilize it, even with the extra weight. And the fact that we're adding, if you, if you neglect the weight of the caissons, we're saving about 43 tons on the hillside. If you include the weight of the caissons, we're adding about 20, 23, I'm sorry, saving 20, 23 tons on the hillside. 20, 23 tons on the hillside, but that's a very accurate calculation with the 10-inch walls and the extra thick base and even the spa and the seat in the spa and the caissons and the pool cover, that's everything.
Okay. This may seem like we're getting into a lot of detail here, but I think it's important to get questions like this out in the open up front rather than later on after the process is already well underway. I asked Andrew to be here. Andrew, as a staff point of view, do you concur with their calculations and their numbers?
Mr. Chair, I do.
You do? Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions for the staff or the applicant before we go to public testimony? Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the analysis that was done because that really was a concern of mine. But I still would like to know, well, for one thing, it says in the staff report, tiebacks along the northern perimeter should be considered. Either staff or engineer?
Chair, Planning Commissioners, Adam Simmons, met you out at the site out there. Nice to see you again. Yes, the questions about the tiebacks, those were initially an option in what we do for any kind of support for walls or residences, we actually look at the possibility of going with a shallower pile and/or smaller diameter with the tieback as a means of support for the slope or wall or structure that we're supporting. But in our case, we actually increased the depth and diameter of the piles to eliminate the need for the tiebacks. And that was basically the determination in 1998 when they did the original piles for the top of bluff or the concrete wall that you see near the top of bluff there, that was the same conclusion as they went down with the drilling of the piers. And I talked to the contractor that built the wall and he said, yeah, he got into really hard shales and they did need the tiebacks and they left it and the wall's in perfect shape since 1998, so I trust his judgment and wisdom there. But in our case, we just increased the diameter of the piles to, that way we don't have to use the tiebacks, act more of as a flagpole type support, so.
Okay, well, related to that, the five piles go below the depth of the caissons for the wall. So what, how far down do the caissons for the wall go and how far down are these going to go?
The proposed pool, the proposed pool piles is supposed to be 40 feet below grade.
I'm sorry?
40 feet below grade.
40 feet below grade.
And, you know, we can adjust that too as we're drilling. Sometimes we get into looser materials and we want to go a little deeper into something, so each one's case by case. The piles for the existing pool, I don't remember from memory, but I think it was either 25 or 30 feet in the 1998 pool piles that were placed for the construction of the wall.
And the soil type below that you're, when you get down to 44 feet, what's?
It's basically shale, Monterey shale. Right, Monterey shale.
Okay. And I know there's a lot of, and justifiably, there's a lot of concern because of the great instability of the hill above that's been below and then the people below.
Sure.
You see the site. It's easy to see why they are very concerned. But, you know, just sort of normal, ordinary shifting, I can see this being designed for that, but what if there was an earthquake?
There's been lots of earthquakes since that slide had occurred, but, I mean, the house has been there since 1948 and it was still there when I looked at it in 2011. The last moderate-sized quake was 1978, a 5.3, but the biggest quake probably that I can remember, or not remember, but at studies, is the 6.3 in 1925, which devastated lots of downtown Santa Barbara area. And the house was not built there then and actually nothing was built on that slope that I'm aware of, but that condition had existed because I'd looked at old aerials going back to 1928, so that slide's ancient. So it's not like a big earthquake's going to trigger that slide into the, it's already been through that experience.
One other question, in the drilling for the new caissons and piles, how close will that be to the existing one and is there any possibility of that, simply the drilling creating any instability for the existing wall and its supports?
Yeah, that's a good question and that was the purpose for placing the piles where we did place them, so they weren't, they aren't too close together to cause impacts to each of the piles. So there are a minimum of eight-foot separation, going from memory, from each of the piles, so that way, and that's pretty typical for construction for walls or underpinning of structures, we'll do an eight to 10-foot range depending on the strength of the grade beam that's available for us. But in our case, that was the purpose, was to space them properly so that we wouldn't have impacts on each of the piles, so that was done in the plans.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, for doing the calculations too.
Commissioner Jordan?
I don't know if it's good or bad that I'm sitting over here Googling the same answers to your questions too.
Did you check it up on me?
Yeah, but mine were like a day or two late though, is the problem. I think, I think you're okay. You can sit back down. It's Andrew, right? So you don't get to just show up and do a yes or no answer. So could you just briefly talk about what staff does to vet the engineering or the structural reports that you get? In particular, the assertion that the pool is self-supporting and that there's no stress on the existing retaining wall as a part of the construction or what's there afterwards?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jordan, building and safety, when we look at a structure, whether it's a structure above ground or below ground, we're going, a substantial structure, we're going to look at soils reports and we're going to become familiar with the type of strata, the type of material that we're designing to, it's one of the basic design assumptions. And then we're going to look at the design strategy that the design professional is employed to see if it's a typical strategy or atypical. If it's typical, our comfort level generally goes up because we see a lot of those. This is generally a typical soil stabilization, hillside stabilization approach. And then we'll look at the actual calculations for the structures below grade to make sure they're not imposing loads that are going to be adverse to any other structures that exist, uphill or downhill.
Okay, and that's gone on already, that's not going to take place later as they get into the process further, that's already been done, you've already vetted that information?
No. Mr. Chair, Councilmember, or Committee Member, Commissioner Jordan, sorry. Don't come to planning commission very often.
Do I get to pick?
Yeah, you know, today you can be whatever you want. That is one of the interesting mysteries, I guess, of the development process. We rely on the design competency of the design professional to really iron out those assumptions and propose a legitimate design when they go through discretionary review processes. And then we hold their feet to the fire in building and safety and make sure that what they've proposed is going to work. And if it doesn't work, then they know they've got to come back.
Okay, so you're not done, you're hand in hand with them as this goes forward through each stage too?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Then Ms. Harrison, I think a question for you or one of your team. So the, you're going to truck in water, you're going to truck out water, is there an assumption, am I making it correct? And you're on septic right now, so you're not going to toss your water into your septic system. Is the pool design process right now not have a drain then? At the bottom of the pool?
That would be correct.
Okay, so that's the right answer I'm looking for. I don't, I think, you know, I would like, I would like to see a big pipe hanging over the cliff with water coming out of it so somebody could be alerted to that if you're actually draining it. I mean, I have people who drain pools down the street in my neighborhood and they just go crazy. And then, I'm good, I'm good there. And then Kelly, one question for you. So in the conditions related to if there was a leak in the pool, there's an include, there's just an inclusion of this French drain thing that would alert the property owners to the fact that there was water draining out from under the pool, but there's nothing there that, that requires action or requires the pool to be drained or the pool to stop being using if such something is found? Is that, do you think that would be appropriate in there or are we just leaving it up to the good graces of the property owner to do the right thing?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Jordan, I, I think that's a good comment and I would look to either Adam or Mr. Cooper's to tell us how to reword that. So if there is a leak detected through the French drain system, that's step A. What is step B, the immediate thing that needs to be done? And I would look for help on that.
You know, you can think about that. There'll be other comments, I think, back and forth, but I would definitely support some further language in there saying what the next step is rather than just if you observe, the thing is there to observe it, but then we let you off the hook for a next step. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Pujol?
Thank you. My questions are primarily for Mr. Simmons. Hi, thank you. Okay. First question, since I think Commissioner Lodge asked part of this, I'll start with this one. The soil types in the area of this development and the slope overall, I believe, if I heard this correctly, you mentioned there's Monterey shale at 40 feet or 240 feet?
Monterey formation starts at about, going from memory, about eight feet, you have terrace deposits on top and then Monterey formation below that. So there's two different types of materials there.
Okay, all right. And the point at which I think it was brought up maybe by yourself earlier, but the point of the potential for any slide, should it occur? Is that the interface between the two soil types or a saturation level? How would that work and what would it be?
Well, I mean, there's always a potential for slippage of soil, near-surface materials, the weathered shale and so forth. Anytime you walk the beach after the big storms, there's materials on the slope. So I would expect that, at least in the areas that aren't retained, anywhere on sea ledge and up and down California coast. But in our case, with the presence of the retaining wall there, the slippage is not anticipated, if that's what your question was, but certainly there'd be movement of materials elsewhere on the slope to the north of the residence. I would expect material to come down and that road would need to be cleaned up periodically if we ever get rain again. And also on the slopes that aren't supported by retaining structures.
Okay. And the other slopes that you're talking about, like the one on the other side of the road north of the site, is that similar soil type and the only difference is that it's not retained?
Correct.
Oh, interesting, okay. My next question, it really, there's three reports cited in our staff report and our conditions and Ms. Broaddus, and I was asking if you could bring some of those to the meeting hearing, I don't know if you have, we don't have them up here anyway. And I believe you did at least two of them. The current one, this year's report, I think it's just a letter report, it's just a two-day letter report. But is there any significant, I didn't get a chance to review the original one, is there any significant information in those? Like, for example, imagine one of those was done when the retaining wall was built? Is that correct?
I'm unaware of a report that was generated in 1998 when the failure occurred. I had reviewed the documentation that was available and showing the plans and so forth, but I'm not sure if a report was generated. There must have been, but it was unable to review that as part of the due diligence of my inspection of the property in 2011.
And the other two reports that were cited, is there any relationship to the work in those reports to this pool proposal?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by related, it's on the same property. Reports were generated to determine the feasibility of creating in addition a remodel of the existing structure, and that was in 2013, I believe, maybe 2012, I have to think about that. I think it's 2012. And there was a soils engineer report prepared at the same time in 2012, June of 2012. Then there was another report prepared by my office in 2015 for the pool and that's all I can remember offhand.
And did you find, I don't know if those reports covered like retreat rates?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So were those findings consistent with yours? Did you independently do your own?
Those were my reports.
Those were your reports? Okay, great. So I imagine they would be consistent.
But no, there was comparison to a property adjacent to the west and they had experienced one inch of retreat over, as an average rate, and they don't have a retaining wall there.
Correct, I read that part in the staff report, yeah.
But there's other ones we've looked there too.
Okay. And then as to the wall itself, could you just briefly summarize? That's on caissons too, is that correct?
Correct. Caissons and a grade beam going across, so it's, they're about 10-foot on center and I believe they're 25 feet deep, 18-inch diameter from memory, but I'm not positive about that.
And did you examine whether that appears to have had any movement since it was built?
Yes, I looked at it very closely, actually in 2011 initially as part of the due diligence for the purchase of the property, and I found no cracking at all that was related to movement at all, it was in perfect shape.
Okay. My next, my next question has to do with the, the pool as it's finished and filled with water and the weight, I understand that part clearly, but the construction process of the pool. So as you construct, you're going to make this big hole, right?
Correct.
And then you're going to have to, I guess, do, are the caissons drilled or poured? I'm not sure, it doesn't matter, but as you install, let's say, the caissons and whatnot, I, is there anything that we need to know about the performance of the soil or the integrity of the slope and the wall itself that needs to be shored up, protected during that process?
They'll be excavating soil as part of the process to remove the dirt to create the lining of the pool and also, as you had stated, the placement of the caissons, which is actually drilled holes that the soil's removed and trucked out or carried out. And then they replace that with concrete and steel inside of the piles, so there'll be a process for removing material and then introducing material, which is now replacing the soil with either water or concrete and steel to create the pool. But there shouldn't be any effects on the retaining wall to the south as long as they're not driving excavators over the, on top of it or anything like that. But I wouldn't, I would suspect that they would stay clear of, all the excavation would be on the outside of that wall.
So it doesn't do anything to put at risk the wall itself as that process is?
That wall's designed, yeah.
Okay. And I have one more question and that, and maybe this map helps, you might be a good one, maybe staff could do it as well, but there's a lot of information on this map and I, it would be helpful for me just to get clear in my mind, if you could point out the different important lines that we love to work with here, and that is top of bluff, 75-year retreat line, especially those two, because there's plenty of lines on there and I'm not sure I could really quite follow them all on my...
It is, it is pretty, filled with detail there, isn't it? The actual retreat rate was zero, so there was really no retreat on there, but there was a structural setback for the structure, there was a 15-foot structural setback from the, from the top of bluff, which is coincident with the retaining wall, it's existing retaining wall that was built in 1998 with the piles on it. So that retaining wall you see there is the top of bluff and the 15-foot setback, at least from my vision here, is this line right here that runs across like this, there.
Okay, so there is no 75-year retreat line because there's no retreat?
Yeah, there's no retreat.
So there's top of bluff and then there's the...
Correct.
Recommended setback that they've meant for, okay. And, and how does that relate to the property below? Is there just one top of bluff all the way down to the toe of the slope at the beach?
Well, this is a unique property in the sense that it is a coastal property, but we actually have a residence that sits below us here, which also has a revetment below that, so we really don't have the wave action impacting the toe of the slope like you do in normal, like say the property just to the east, it's on Cliff Drive. They have a whole different set of parameters for determining the setback from the slope. So the erosion that occurs at the base of the slope down here has impacts on the slope and that increases or decreases the rates of retreat based on the erosion rate at the toe of slope. Our case, we have retaining wall that's supporting the slope at the top here, our top of slope, and then we have a house down below here, which isn't, we're not getting wave activity between the houses, so it's kind of a unique position to be in, that's why we're not seeing the retreat rates on that spot there. Plus, the house below has revetment at the base, which also is hard to get these days, but that is really a huge plus in supporting the sea cliff.
And so if we're calling, the line you pointed out is the top of bluff, that means the entire home below is below the top of bluff?
Correct.
Interesting, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Schwartz, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Harrison, I'll just ask you to maybe point to whichever team member might be appropriate. But I'd like to reference this slide and ask you to discuss for a moment and explain more clearly. There are various areas, paved areas, that are proposed. There's a lot of discussion in our package around stormwater runoff management and drainage. So I'd like you to, we have a deck here, a deck there, there is another deck down here, there's a wood, let me look here, wood deck referenced here, and then flagstone patio here. Could you talk about the proposed plan for all of this relative to stormwater runoff and drainage management? There's a lot of discussion about pool drainage management, but help me with this if you would.
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, so, yeah, you're correct. So this is all new deck area that's wood or IPE or some form of material. And all the drainage from this portion of the site will move this direction toward the bluff, but there's a bioswale here, and there is a storm, there's an inlet here, and I can't tell if there's one in here, but there's one here. So it does historically, because it can't go up, so it comes this way. Oops.
Where's the bioswale? Can you just point out where it's referenced on this?
It's here, yeah. So the swale, the swale is right here. And under the house CDP, it used to continue all the way along. So there's a piece here, and there's a piece here. But basically, it goes around the pool now. And there are, like I mentioned, 11 drop inlets all the way around here. And so this gets picked up and then continues down here. And then there's a inlet here, and then, oops, my batteries are running out, I think that's what's going on. There's an inlet here, and then that's also bioswale, and it picks up there. So these two pieces come together and connect here to what this is called a bioretention planter, that all the cals were also part of the house CDP. But it's basically, an impervious chamber that filters the stormwater, or the site drainage and the stormwater that comes through there, and then slows it down, and then does, then it goes through and does, it releases it onto the driveway, which then, through the historic patterns of how the site has drained, continues down the driveway to, down here, there's two six-inch storm drains that then take the water down to the beach.
You have so many details referenced here. Is there a reason the bioswale isn't identified on the site plan and on this slide?
This piece here?
Well, as I was following your pointer, I'm looking for where it actually says.
There, you know, I don't know for sure.
So you didn't call it out on the plan?
Yeah, I'm assuming there's a label on there somewhere that might be small, and it's not going to be in red because we didn't change it, it was approved as part of the...
I keep lifting up my glasses, excuse me to see.
You're not going to make it better.
The very, the micro fine print.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in there somewhere, but I agree. Because of the topos on here and everything, there's a lot of lines, it's hard to...
Okay, very good. My next question is that there's already been some discussion and a lot of reference in our package to the weight, the pool and the water versus the soil being removed. My question, and I don't know if this is both to Mr. Simmons and Andrew, what is your last name?
Stufler.
Stuf...
Stufler.
Stufler. Thank you, I just didn't catch that. Really, to both of you, whoever's best positioned, what about the bluff top disturbance in the proposed action that's being planned? Now, separate from the weight, once we disturb certain sensitive areas, regardless of whether or not we're replacing like weight, you know, same weight, less weight, the disturbance itself could have adverse geologic effects, and so I'd like some comments on that. Thank you.
Okay, first of all, I did locate with my, this is very fine print, by the way, but it does show the swale with the arrows. The arrows indicate the swale that runs along the adjacent.
Oh, just the arrows, it doesn't actually say bioswale.
It shows the drain inlets and the swale, but it's not really described as a swale, but it is shown as, and this thing's running out of juice, I guess, but it's running right along, right along that, inside of that wall there. And then it kicks around the pool, goes through the inlet, and comes around the outside there.
Arrows. Ms. Pujol is asking just a point for me.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, so I see the arrows.
Okay, right here. I've got it right here. So right there, you see those arrows, they're really tiny. They go along here, then there's a drain inlet right there, there, runs along the outside. So it's really hard to see, but
Okay.
But they are shown on the plan.
All right.
This is actually a reduced, reduction of a larger plan, too, so it looks like 1-inch equals 8 feet, so this has been reduced for reading enjoyment, but it's hard to read.
Okay. So to my question about bluff top disturbance, close to bluff top disturbance?
Oh, yeah, so we're not really disturbing the materials on the bluff, since it's really not a true bluff top, but it's already, it was all patios and so forth before. So it's not like there's plants being removed or any type of change to the density of the materials. It's, we're removing material and then replacing it with concrete and steel and water, as far as the pool goes. And the house was an existing house, it changed the footprint slightly, but there is really no net impact that would create a disturbance to the stability of the slope, because it is retained by a caisson retaining wall. So, you know, if we're disturbing the top 6 inches, it's not going to have any material effect on the slope.
Okay. From a building and safety perspective, Mr. Stufler, could you comment as well?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, boy, it's going to be hard to say commissioner, I don't know why, I've got to practice that 10 times. When we look at the construction drawings, we're going to confirm that the pool structure will impose no loads on anything lateral to it. That is our way of confirming that there's going to be no additional loading by the disruption of that soil. It's going to act as a unit on its own and not impose loads elsewhere that have to be picked up by other structures.
Okay. Mr. Vincent, for you. This sea ledge lane is a private road, and could you just, oh, look at this the second time, he's like MIA when I get to ask a question. When he comes back, I'm going to ask this question. In the meantime, poor Mr. Vincent. Okay, I'm going to go on, then. So proceeding through our package, I'm just going to go sequentially through the package with my questions. And I'm going to start with, let me just see here, start at the beginning. So on page three, Ms. Broaddus of the staff report, could you help me understand, there's, it says, "Site is located within 50 feet of the edge of a coastal bluff." Then, I'm trying to understand this in reference to the next page, page four, under hazards. Now we're talking, in the last paragraph on page four of the staff report, so again, let's keep in mind, 50 feet of the edge of a coastal bluff, the site. And I want to ask you kind of how you define site, because then, the last paragraph of the next page, page four, "The top of the natural coastal bluff," and I want to ask you what now, how natural is defined, given everything we've been talking about. Top of natural coastal bluff is actually approximately 100 feet south or down slope of the existing residence of the site retaining wall. So could you help me kind of understand these two references, how one is so differently defined than the other? And what's edge versus top if these are two different geological or coastal act terms?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, it's hard for me, too. That is language I took from, partially from Mr. Simmons's report. However, when I say 50, it's a determination we use when determining when a project is in the appealable jurisdiction or the non-appealable jurisdiction. So this project is within 50 feet of a bluff. When I say that the natural bluff, that means below Ms. Bastian's house, that is natural bluff top area, whereas below Mr. Habra's house, that is not natural bluff top, that's retaining wall. So I remember the last CDP I had with the planning commission, there was some questions on my kind of flip-flopping of the use of those terms, so I'm trying to get, trying to work on that. But hopefully that helps, and if you have other questions regarding the verbiage, we can talk to Mr. Simmons.
Okay. I think I'm okay for now with that, I'm just going to ponder that. So let me stay then on page four of the staff report. Second to the last paragraph, this speaks to the local coastal plan. And in that first sentence, there's a reference to "normal rates of erosion." Could you define what normal rates of erosion are here? If you would, please. I don't know, if you or Mr. Stufler's or Mr. Simmons?
I'm sorry, what page was that?
I'm on page four, the same page, page four of the staff report. It's the second to the last paragraph, it starts, "The local coastal plan states," and it goes on, et cetera. Then further on in that sentence, there's a reference to "normal rates of erosion will not seriously affect the structure during its expected lifetime." So I'm drilling down on this, given the sensitivity of the geology in this area and its slide history. So you talk about normal rates of erosion and why you do not believe it will seriously affect the structure during its expected lifetime.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Schwartz, "Normal rates of erosion," that actual verbiage I got actually out of the local coastal plan. So however, the coastal plan defines normal rates of erosion, and I think what I was trying to say is that this project is not subject to normal rates of erosion because of several factors, the retaining wall, the rock revetment, the fact that there's another house between wave erosion and the structure.
Mr. Vincent, back to you now that you're back in the chambers. Sea ledge lane is a private road. Could you help me understand if we have any, one, any greater or less scope of authority over anything that we're to consider today because this property is on a private road? And number two, pertaining to it being on a private road, do we have, and I'm now looking at page 10 of 11 of the conditions of approval under litigation and demnification, do we have any different legal liability should this proposed project be approved, given that it's on a private road?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the commission and the city is statutorily immune from liability for its permitting activity today. So nothing about the private road changes that. Historically, the city treated private roads and public roads differently for setback purposes, but that distinction is no longer applicable. And so that's about the only thing I'm thinking of as far as private road that comes to mind. This particular portion of the application or the amendment proposed for you today is on the opposite side of the residence, so I don't see where that affects anything as far as how this plays out.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Mr. Vincent, I want to ask you again, I want to, again, I'm just sequentially going through our package in no particular order, from a priority of consideration from my perspective. So on page seven of our staff report, under findings that we ultimately will need to have to make today, in terms of the coastal development permit, I note the coastal commission is moving in a policy direction of time-constrained CDPs. We just saw that in the Galita Beach Park decision that the coastal commission made, for example. Is there any authority or jurisdiction that we have today to consider a time-constrained CDP, should the commission be interested in that, as opposed to a CDP approval in perpetuity?
Madam Chair, members of the, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, the, I wouldn't make an analogy to the, to the Galita Beach revetment application and this application for this reason. The Galita Beach revetment, one, is on the beach and there is still, I would say there is, the community of thought on the effective, the effective revetments on beaches is not settled. There are essentially two camps, or maybe that's an oversimplification. There are many camps as to whether revetments on beaches are a good thing or a bad thing. In this particular situation, you have in the record before you an example of, the retaining wall has existed since, I believe, 98. And the most recent investigation of that retaining wall showed no change to it. So the factual situation between the Galita Beach example and this particular example, I don't make a correlation between those two. So that, that would be my comment in that regard.
Okay. Moving on, we received some letters of members of the public, and I have questions from a couple of the letters. First, the letter from, and I hope I'm pronouncing this, Chris Bastian, Bastian?
She will be a public speaker when we get finished with commission questions.
So you're going to allow us to ask a member of the public questions, if it's directly to the letter that we received from her?
Sure.
Okay. So then I'm going to go to a letter from Leon and Joyce Lunt. Are they going to be here speaking today, or just, no, okay. So my question there is, and I don't know if staff, Ms. Broaddus, if you've reviewed this and kind of the veracity, but I had some questions along the lines of their's letter. So in their letter dated June 7th, these significant slides, you know, I'm trying to reconcile, a reference to significant slides with some photographs with a statement that I believe Mr. Simmons, or was made, I think in the staff report, "Zero erosion in the past 48 years due to the presence of existing retaining wall and rock revetment at the base of the slope." Could somebody help me understand, on the one hand, there's a statement of zero erosion in the past 48 years, and at the same time, I'm seeing photographs of, and I think there's evidence of slides, okay, hillside slides? So the two sets of information don't synchronize for me.
Okay, I can clarify that, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Sure, thank you. The retreat rate is measured and based on the top of slope in 1966 or 65, or whatever the reference point is. In that case, I believe it was a 1966 aerial photograph. So if you take a reference point of that top of bluff in 1966 and compare it to today's current position of top of slope, there's no net loss of slope, because what might have happened between 66 and 98 was a loss and then a rebuild, but the net change was zero, meaning I can't measure a retreat rate on something that's not visible for that time period. So even though there was a loss of materials in 1998, they had went ahead and built the wall and actually placed the wall where the current or previous top of slope was located, which offers a net zero slope change over those, over that 48-year time period, if you're measuring the total time change for erosion.
That's up through 98 you're referencing, as kind of the most...
Well, actually, it's today, we're measuring, I mean, that wall's still there today, it's still the top of slope. So if you measure that wall today in 2015 and compare it to 1966 or some other reference point that you have accuracy, like the 1965 topographic maps or 1938 aerial photographs or whatever you choose as your basis point to determine this, the actual retreat rate, that timeframe has to base it on the current top of slope, which is the top of wall. There's no way to pick a different top of slope.
Then, then I would also like somebody to respond in this same letter, then. Says, "As recently as this past year," so now we're talking 2014, let's say, past year, "emergency permit was requested by the city to put in a retaining wall and other supports as the soil below the road just inside the gate to sea ledge had collapsed." Now, I realize that's not on the ocean side of this applicant's property, but I'm still, you know, this is in my effort to understand the total geology in the area and the sensitivity and vulnerability in the area,
Sure.
Given its history, including a statement of this past year's erosion.
Okay, I can answer that, too, if you like.
Okay, and if there's anyone from the city who has history on that, since an emergency permit was requested by our own city, that would be helpful to know as well. And again, this is from a member of the public who sent this to us.
Okay, I was actually called out to evaluate that slide.
Okay.
And I thought it was more than a year ago, but maybe it's been a year. But we really haven't had that much rain, so it's unusual to have a slide there. So what we found is that there is a drainage culvert that goes through there, but as part of this placement of a power pole, from my remembrances at least, they had pushed some fill in kind of a funky retaining wall to support the earth materials surrounding the power pole. I don't know if it was Edison, I don't know who actually put it in, but Edison. So that was the reason for the failure, wasn't anything to do with the natural erosion or slide. Somebody had created an unsafe or unstable condition with the placement of the fill materials and improper placement of the retaining wall, which caused the failure of that, the road as you drop in past the gate there. So that's been since corrected, and there's now a retaining wall with caissons there, and I watch that be installed, too.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for that. And then my last question on this particular letter from the member of the public has to do with a statement that, one should recall, the pool leakage on the Fest Park Orosia Front property, one mile west of sea ledge, had an undetected leak that resulted... property, one mile west of Sea Ledge, had an undetected leak that resulted in a significant ocean bluff slide. So now to the applicant's proposal, and I'm not an expert on pool engineering, so if somebody could just point out how it is in layman's terms with the proposed engineering, is there absolutely, to your testimony, no way that beyond the way you propose to engineer it, there's no other leak that could happen such that it would destabilize the bluff since if this information is correct in the public's letter, there has been a bluff slide due to leak from a pool. This is again, the Fest Parker Oceanfront property nearby.
Okay, it just so happened I did work on Fest Parker's too.
Oh, you're the man of the hour.
That was 1988, that's going back a few years, but that did have some adverse geologic conditions there that we're aware of even prior to the leak of the pool. So placement of the pool near the bluff, adverse geologic bedding, the Monterey Formation that we talked about was like a deck of cards tilting down slope, and those beds were unsupported at the base and actually caused the failure of the slope. So it was a classic textbook landslide there, and that does happen even in the city on Shoreline Drive, it was the same exact thing that happened there too, which I was looking at that one too. But anyways, for Fest Parker's, the pool leak, the pool leak is important though, and I think that was the purpose for me in writing the report, stating that we want to have a ability to identify if there's any leaks occurring in the pool, as opposed to just, well, gosh, I'm noticing some cracks in the pool and already it's too late, everything's saturated, and you run the risk of slope stability problems. So the purpose of this was to create a, it's not really shown in this, it's a cross section on another slide here, which, let's see, I don't know which direction though, probably the other direction, actually. Let's see here, bear with me, there we go. Okay, so in this case, we have a membrane that's not allowing water to percolate. If water was to leak from the pool, we have a drain that's placed, you can see it right here, it's a little six-inch drain that collects water from the pool. If there was any leaks in the pool itself, it would fall through this gravel, this gravel French drain that we have underneath the pool. And that actually allows water to spill in and go into this perforated pipe and then drain out by gravity to the east where those other drains were, which is a couple spots over here. That's right here, it drains out right out in here, that, that French drain, so that if, if water did manage to leak out of the pool, it can't penetrate the ground and create the conditions as in Fest Parker's. It'd actually fall into this gravel trench and then pull into the French drain pipe as designed, which falls by gravity to the east. And so if any moisture is observed, we would notice that and say, okay, here's water that's coming out of the pool, we need to address that and, and re-waterproof or whatever it is we need to do to fix it.
Okay, my next question, thank you, Mr. Simmons. So I think this is back to staff on page four of 11 of our conditions of approval. Under number two, drainage, the third bullet down, which is a new bullet, all runoff water, et cetera, directed via an impervious conduit to an appropriate disposal area. Could somebody more clearly define for me what an, or where the, an appropriate disposal area is, since this is a very generic term, and I'm a little uncomfortable with the generic aspect of this reference?
That's not, Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, I'm sorry, that's not a new bullet, that was.
Oh, how come it's, how come it's aligned?
You know how Word is, Microsoft Word? That is, that is a previous condition from the previous approval. The new condition is adding the French drain, which I think is.
Okay, so even though there's an underline at this bullet point, it actually doesn't pertain to this bullet point, it's the next one, which I already know is new, French drain system will be placed below.
Right, and we're going to add on to that one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me go on. My next question, page seven of 11 in our conditions of approval, construction, storage, staging, Ms. Broaddus or perhaps somebody else, could you just confirm for me that there's actually room to fulfill, unless you're going to tell me this was already also in place, three dot, four, three dot four? So is, is this also an error that this, that this is not new even though there's a reference to, at least in Word, this would look like it's new? Construction via materials, storage, and staging shall be done on site. No parking or storage shall be permitted within the public right of way. This is such a narrow street and we were there on site, I wouldn't know where you could park anything off the street, so can you just confirm that there's actually room to do this?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, that is not a new, new condition.
Yeah, so that's an error too, in the way.
Well, what it is, is we added one somewhere and it changed all the numbering, so we tried to, we wanted to show you the changes we were making.
Okay.
But I would add that.
But I would ask for confirmation anyway, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm trying to give you that.
Okay.
And I would say that that is a construction that at the last hearing in 2013, I believe, Ms. Pujo was, were you on the commission at the time? Were very concerned about that and wanted to make sure that the width of the driveway wasn't going to be blocked by a bunch of equipment. And I could even let Mr. Vincent speak more to that because he, there was a little bit of verbiage back and forth regarding messing with that condition, but we could see on site that they're doing the best they can to keep condition, to keep construction equipment off-site or off the pathway, so that's the best I can answer that one, sorry.
Okay, thank you for that. I think I have one last question here. Exhibit E in our package, which is local coastal plan policies, I don't know, Mr. Vincent, if this is to you to help me balance and reconcile, so I'm looking at the language in policy 1.2, 1.3, where there's, it clearly states that where policies within the land use plan overlap, the policy which is the most protective of the resources shall take precedence. That's 1.2, then we go to 1.3. Conflicts between the policies set forth in the land use plan and those set forth in any other element of the city's existing general plan or existing regulations, the policies of the land use plan take preference, precedence, excuse me. And I would even, you know, reference on the same page under hazards policies, 8.1, that accomplish landward drainage, et cetera, size to accommodate runoff from all similarly drained parcels bordering the subject. Okay. So can you help me understand how, given, given the, the project proposed today is really allowable, given what appears to require precedence in consideration? If I'm reading the policies 1.2 and 1.3 correctly, I guess we can take the hazards policy separately, Because this clearly seems to set a schematic of prioritization in our decision-making, what we should consider, which level of priority?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, I'm not, I'm not seeing the conflict between policy 1 and, 1.2 and 1.3.
Not, not between the two of them?
Yes.
But together, they're saying this is what should take precedence in your considerations, and that's what is this in the land use plan? And I'm not seeing in the land use plan policies that completely support the project proposed, so I'm struggling with that. I don't know if there's any, any illumination you have for me about?
I'm looking in, in the, in the policy list that's been presented to you, which, which is the land use, the land use plan policy to which you're finding a conflict? I'm not seeing.
You're not seeing, you're not seeing.
I'm not seeing a land use plan policy identified.
And, and why, why is that not when this is in our package as a set of policies that should be considered relative to the proposed project?
Commissioner Chair, I'm sorry, Commissioner Schwartz, the land use policy is the hazards and the visual from the land use plan of the coastal zone. So those are the ones identified for this project, 8.1 and 9.1.
But under general policies at the very top of this page, I assume this is, this was provided to us because these policies, these local coastal plan policies must be considered in regard to the proposed project. So we have a set of general policies, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, and they referenced, 1.2, 1.3 references land use plan considerations and a policy which needs to most protect the resources, that should, you know, water, air, et cetera, shall take precedence. That's just up in the general policy section, right? You've included in exhibit several policy areas, so that's under general policy. So I'm just asking how staff and/or Mr. Vincent could provide a position of recommendation or support that what we have before us today does not conflict with protecting, a protection of the resources, taking precedence over the proposal to build the pool in the way it's been proposed?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, Commissioner Schwartz, which resource are you referring? What, what, what threat to which resource, and then I can maybe address the question?
Well, it would seem to me that relative to the coastal act and protecting the coastal bluff and coastal bluff resources, that that's part of our consideration today, and that's why we've been having all this discussion. We have so much documentation around the geology, Mr. Simmons answering questions extensively.
Okay, so I, I would answer it this way.
Okay.
If you or the majority of the commission believe that the application before you presents a hazard to the coastal bluff, then deny the application. If the information that has been presented to you satisfies you that the application before you does not present a hazard to the coastal bluff, then you may approve the application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vincent, that's helpful there. And then lastly, maybe to staff on the same page, hazards policy, policy 8.1, number one, that the new development of bluff top land, then it goes on, you know, shall be, there's a lot of information there. Number one, size to accommodate runoff from all similarly drained parcels bordering the subject parcels property lines. Could someone affirm for me that that has been thoroughly investigated and this is, this would be true should the project be approved today? This is again, exhibit E, I'm under local coastal plan policies, hazards policies, 8.1. It's on the first page of exhibit E.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, the historic drainage of Sea Ledge Lane is remaining the same. It's collected, all the sites are now with our new SWIMP or storm water ordinance, they're required to treat, retain, and reduce runoff. However, historically, and as it continues now, excess runoff collects on Sea Ledge Lane and goes down to the very far east corner where there are two six-inch storm drains that go down to the permitted storm pipe that goes down to the ocean.
Could you just, do you have a, maybe a laser just point to, to that?
This is the same as when we looked at this back in 2013, so I'll let Ms. Harrison.
I was not here for that review, so again, because this is back before.
She's pointing it out to you right now.
Yeah, that would be helpful, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Harrison, can you just point that out?
Yeah, of course.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, I just wanted to add too, yeah, as part of the original House CDP review, we had very detailed hydrology analysis and drainage analysis and best management practices analysis, and there's a, there's a diagram in that exhibit that shows the larger watershed, so you know, if you continue along Sea Ledge Lane and then up in the hillside above, that all, there's calculations that this can accommodate all of that. And I do, Mr. Chair, if I may, before you finish the staff report, I just had one little edit too that I would like to add, if you'd like me to say it now or later. Just on page six of the conditions of approval, we originally submitted this application with a letter from Adam Simmons dated October 19th, 2014, but the current letter is April 14th, 2015, so that's superseded the October 19th letter. So just, yeah, strike that, yeah, just strike that from the conditions of approval.
Could you, could you or staff specifically point out where on page six? Is it E, are we talking about E1, E2?
Yes, at the bottom of the page, E2. It mentions October 19th, 2014, so just strike that date so that it's only referencing April 14th, 2015. So that helps with the confusion too.
Thank you for noticing that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just, one thing too, I wanted, I didn't know if there was a, there was a comment letter in support, there's three comment letters that were supported or submitted in support of the project, and one came in today, and I don't know if that made it into the record. It's from, you have it, okay, it's from Sorrell, who also lives on Sea Ledge Lane. The other two in support are on Cliff Drive. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to hold further comments from the commission to allow our one public speaker to speak and to allow Commissioner Lodge, who has to leave in 14 minutes, or, excuse me, 19 minutes, to have a chance to listen to the public speaker and put in her comments since she hasn't really had a chance. So we have one request to speak, Chris Krach Bastian.
Chair Thompson and planning commissioners, I'm Chris Crash Bastian. I live below the Harbor property, and I did send you a letter. And I also today gave you this little packet of some other photos of our neighborhood. I'm really very seriously concerned about this pool being proposed on this property because of the slides that have happened on, on Sea Ledge. In 1973, two bedrooms and a bath of my home went down to the beach. Okay, so I'm real, I didn't even live there, my late husband lived there, and I'm really sensitive to this. And as I've shared with Jacques, it's just such a slippery slope where we live, and the thought of having, I've heard all the discussion today about, and it sounds like it could really be safe, but in the chance that it's not, in the chance that Mother Nature decides to give us a huge earthquake, or we have another El Nino like we, we have had, I, I am really worried about my home. And this is what I inherited from my late husband, this is where I want to live out my life, and I'm pretty sure that if anything happens to it, I'm not going to be able to rebuild it in the city of Santa Barbara where it is. So those are my concerns. My other concern is that we're in a drought, we're in a stage three drought. I'm doing all kinds of things, as I'm sure some of you are doing in your homes, to save water. So the idea of a pool when your steps are on the beach just seems a little over the top to me. And the last thing, the last thing I'd like to say is that if you do approve this, I'm just curious, what's, what is my protection as the person below if something does go wrong? And who do I come to? Do I come back here? Do I come to the city? Do I sue Jacques? What do I do? So that's all my concerns and everything I have. This is again, the picture of, of the slide, the Winestocks home with the wooden retaining wall that came down not only onto the street but onto our property, and we were locked, my husband and family was locked in because you could not get out of Sea Ledge Lane during that time. I have one more, and that's just right there, and my house is on the corner. This is also, this is, this right here is the retaining wall that Edison put in when we had the leak about a year ago. This is on Cliff Drive. There's a pool on Sea Cliff, beautiful home, beautiful pool. It leaked, and nobody knew about it. Perhaps he didn't have the state of the art that Mr. Harbor is going to have, but it still leaked and it came down on Cliff Drive. That was in January 214. You don't have records of it because the owner fixed it without coming to the city. But that's a photograph where they put the cloth on it and replanted the hill. That's right on Cliff Drive. And again, that's just the top view. This is what it looked like, and I'm not sure because I wasn't here for these slides. I have a, a lot of stepchildren that remember it very clearly, but that's how, that's how blocked the street was. And just in, eight years ago, when we did have an El Nino, Mr. Girilock, who supports the pool above us on Cliff Drive, his whole front of his property, the hillside, came down and filled the whole turnaround. I'm a little concerned about that drainage thing because if it's going to go down into the turnaround, that heads straight down into my driveway. So I, and I'm not quite sure, listening to the comments today, how that's going to work. But at any rate, that's, that's what, that's where we live, and that's where this house and this pool is proposed to be in. Again, I hope you'll really consider my property below. Thank you so much.
Okay, you might want to wait there. I think some commissioners said they might have some questions for you. Commissioner Schwartz, did you say you had questions for Ms. Bastian?
I'm going to wait until I allow Ms. Lodge. It wasn't announced that she was leaving early, so I want to give her the opportunity.
Okay.
Okay, fine, I'll be there.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, I will close public testimony because we only had one speaker, and bring it back, Commissioner Lodge, for your comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to go first. Commissioner Schwartz was heading in this direction, but didn't quite ask this question about the geology. When Ms. Harrison said there's been zero cliff retreat in 48 years, I was sort of like dumbfounded, you know, what, what part of the California coastline hasn't retreated over that time? And apparently it's because of two very well-constructed retaining walls and a rock revetment at the toe. However, there have been all these other slides on the other side of the, the road, and my question is, what's different about the geology where the pool is going from the opposite side of the street, if anything?
Good question, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners. The, the actual materials that aren't supported by retaining walls would be subject to rainfall effects, erosion, potentially rockfall. effects, erosion, potentially rockfall and slippage anywhere along the sea cliffs. So I would imagine that anybody living anywhere near the sea cliffs is going to experience, in an El Nino, some type of potential or increased potential for erosion, rockfall, or even landslides. But in our case, this pool area is supported by a retaining wall with caisson, so there's no opportunity for erosion to occur at that point since it's concrete and steel going down deeper than 20 or 25 feet, whatever the depth was for those piles. So there would be quite a difference in support of the same materials, one side versus the other, if that answers your question.
Yes, now the, so it's the way the pool has been designed and its supports that make the difference. I think you said it goes down to Monterey shale?
Yes, Monterey shale is the material that's all along the bluff there.
Yeah, okay. My impression is that Monterey shale fractures. That's where we get fracking from. And I guess I'm just uneasying, so I'm going to make my comment, which is that despite what has been a lot of careful attention to the risks and hazards here, I don't think I could support the pool. I could support the spa part, but the pool is just, it's just a bit too much. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. We'll go on with other questions and comments. If you have to leave, you'll just have to leave. Commissioner Higgins, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. To staff, back to Condition E2 on page six, and maybe related to the mysteries of the development and review process. How do you propose that the applicant not have to come back here if there are some changes to the design from the April 14, 2015 letter? The structural analysis or calc's haven't been completed yet. We're not there yet, but I don't particularly, if this is approved, see you need to have it come back if there's a 32-inch diameter caisson, or there's six caissons or three caissons. So that's just my question.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Higgins, I think what you're asking is, if during building plan check, one of the plan check corrections requires that the designers and the engineers re-engineer to make it stronger, bigger, better, how would that be message to you? And one answer is that we could do a substantial conformance determination. And if it's not visible to the, you know, above ground, it wouldn't require any level of design review. I think that answers the question. I'll look to Mr. Steffler or Mr. Vincent to verify.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Higgins, so when we're doing the building plan check, zoning's doing a plan, planning's doing a plan check as well. So if we get to a point where we see changes to the design, we bring them to the attention of the planner and say, hey, you know, it looks like this design's going to have to change. What's that going to mean in our development process? Do they need to go back to planning commission? Is this something staff can approve? Should we tell them to look at other alternatives to try to avoid that? So we give them, the applicant, the options then that are before them? So it could be done at the staff level or?
I'll throw in my gloss on this as well. You know, if the, if the general tenant or techniques of engineering remain the same, and it's just a matter of scope of the caissons get larger, maybe there is even one more caisson as opposed to the five that have been represented so far, if those are consistent with the calculations as the numbers get flushed out even further, I wouldn't see that coming back to the planning commission. If the, if the engineering concept completely morphed into something that was not represented to the planning commission today, you might see a substantial conformance determination coming back so that you can have an explanation as to the entirely different new engineering design.
Thank you. I'll leave it up to the applicant as to whether or not they want to ask for any softening of that language in the condition as it sits now, but that's where I'm headed. But appreciate the responses.
Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Question for Mr. Simmons again. If I understand it correctly, the caissons for the new pool, I believe are going to be 40 feet in.
Correct, 40-foot minimum, yes.
And if I look at approximately an 80-foot mark at the deck, and I guess something like eight feet below that, there'd be a caisson after you excavate out. So that might be like the 72-foot mark. The toe of slope is around 56. So there's about 16 feet, and then maybe another 20 feet or so that's going to go below the current toe of slope on the roadway below.
Okay.
So it'd be a significantly deeper caisson. If you look at toe of slope, it's going way below that, and also deeper than the current retaining wall. Is it about 24 feet?
Correct.
As far as the construction process, how are the holes going to be dug for the caissons? What process?
There'll be a limited access rig that comes in, just like when we underpin homes that have trouble supporting the outer perimeter. And the access equipment comes in, it'll actually bore out the hole with a drill rig. And just like they did for the house, it was the same principle approach. And that would remove the soil, and then the cage steel goes in with the concrete after the soil's removed.
Okay, so this is going to be poured in place?
Correct.
It's not coming in precast?
No, it's poured in place.
Or it has to be drilled in or?
It's drilled in, you place your cage, and then your concrete.
Okay, so there's a limit on the soil disturbance that it could occur?
Correct.
If, or a pile that started getting hammered in, that would be a, no, right?
We'd get effects from the neighbor, noise levels and all that.
Okay. Let's see then, and I guess question on, for the pool, our pool expert, on the pool itself. Hi. The south portion of the pool, it was mentioned that there's going to be a six-foot higher little wall by the bluff top there, above the pool level, above the pool deck level, so that water doesn't go over the bluff?
Mr. Chair, commissioners, that was a coping, I believe, that Ms. Harrison talked about, to prevent splash water from going over that wall. Over the retaining wall.
So it's not in addition to the coping? It's a high coping?
It is part of, it is the coping that sits on the, on top of the pool, yes.
Okay. And so that would be by six inches, that's six inches above the water level, or normal separation plus another six inches? Say a high, is it a high coping type wall that we'll see? 12-inch wall?
Yeah, I'll try to break that down. The initial pool structure is a certain height, and the water line is three inches below that height. And then on top of that height is placed a coping. A coping, depending on what, what material is picked, is usually two to three inches thick. So that would make a total of six inches from water line to the top of the coping. Did that answer your question?
That's, but what you're doing is, that's not unusual. That's standard?
Standard.
Okay. But I was under the impression something special was being done so that water wouldn't go over the top of the retaining wall?
Not at all, it's not necessary.
Not necessary, this is sufficient, okay. And then the, the area there by the wall, is that going to be area that's restricted from people sitting on? It's just a small ledge? It's not going to attract people sitting on top of it and, you know, with the slope down below? It's just a real narrow coping area?
The coping will be approximately 10 to 12 inches wide. I don't see anybody trying to step out on that or even sit on it. It's on the far side of the pool. The views from the other side of the pool, I don't anticipate anybody doing that, but...
So due to that size, is it sloped back to the pool so water doesn't accumulate? Or does it have its own drain going to the?
It drains, good question. We have to provide that it drains to this drainage system that has been pointed out on either end of the pool.
So by doing that, you're going to have to slope that a bit to get the water to flow?
It's how the coping is made that allows the water to drift toward the drainage system.
Okay, good. All right. And then as far as the, in the, where the pool cover would be, water that collects is going to be able to be pumped out?
Actually, that's a very good question. The, if you look at the top, if you look at the pool, on this end of the pool is the cover box, and in the upper corner is the drain. It's a three-inch drain that's tied into the drainage system that will go around the swimming pool, meet the, what do you call that, the V ditch? If you go back to where the top of the cover is, excuse me, back to that same picture you're on, if I may, I'll just point it out, which is a pointer. Right here's the top of the box. And if you see that pipe right here, that is now attached to the drainage, which is right here. So the natural drainage is here, going around the pool, picking up the cover box right here, and continuing on.
Okay, so there's no pump that's required, or sump pump, or anything like that? It's going to gravity flow, and you've got a wide enough pipe at three inches that you're not worried about things getting clogged up or backed up?
In fact, on top of the pipe in the cover box, we put a trap so that we can't get debris into that pipe.
All right, good, thank you. I'm sorry, for Mr. Simmons, one more question if I can. With the excavation for the pool, and let's call it about eight feet of excavation close to the existing retaining wall, you're not aware of any, I'll call it this way, any horizontal ties that are in their current wall or supports that might be run into when you're actually excavating for this particular pool?
Correct, the existing retaining wall is vertical caisson support. They had proposed tiebacks, but the drilling was hard enough for them at the time in 1998 to determine that tiebacks wouldn't be necessary based on the competent material they're hitting with the, with the vertical piles.
So you're not going to run into anything that, a surprise when you're, that's a...
Hopefully not.
Hope not. And then the exposure of about eight feet of that wall during, would not be any type danger to the integrity of the existing wall itself while you're constructing the pool?
No, it'd be just the same as if they were building the wall. It's, there's nothing behind it when you build it, so it'd be the same condition.
And I guess as a question for the team and staff, if in the future, after the pool is completed, the existing retaining wall, there's some type of failure, right? It would be the obligation of the owner to go and repair, just like it was before. This pool support is not taking the place, it's not the belts and suspenders, it's totally of and by itself. But any damage to the existing retaining wall, for whatever reason, it would have to be replaced structurally?
It would be their best interest to replace the, or repair the wall, depending on what it does, but it'd be very hard to do that. But let's say something happened, then it would be their interest to fix that.
Okay, that's their interest. I guess for staff, is that a sort of condition that would be made that we're not substit, so that we're not substituting the pool structure for the retaining wall that's currently there? I mean, I suggest we might want to consider that, that the existing wall would have to be repaired of and by itself if there's damage in the future. For discussion amongst the other commissioners then as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, Commissioner Campanella, I just wanted to add to that too, that the house under construction right now, the contractor out there, actually potholed in the locations where the tiebacks could have, would have been, just to confirm that there was nothing there. So we know for certain that we won't run into anything.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's it, thanks.
Commissioner Pujol, other questions?
Yes, thank you. I have an additional question for Mr. Simmons.
Hello.
So this is back to the specialized drainage. I actually think much of the pool that's being proposed, I don't see much that's non-standard about the construction of the pool itself. I mean, maybe I'll disclose, I have a very, very similar pool at my home, and it looks like everything that you've been talking about with the coping and the cover and the box at the end, and I'm on a flat lot. So I think that's pretty typical, that part. The caissons is not typical, of course. And the other thing is some elements of how you're tying into the drainage, I believe, are not typical. And that's the follow-up question that I have for you, and it's, and it's this, it's framing it this way. If you would, for a second, remind me, what is the currently approved plan for the area that would now be taken up by the pool? Is it deck or landscaping? I forget what was there on the original plan.
I believe it's just soil or dirt, landscaping, right?
Landscaping, some sort of landscaping there? Okay, so the area now is landscaping, and there's an above-ground spa that I had forgotten, but I guess we approved as an as-built when this came through a year or so ago. So if you could compare the risk associated with that drainage system failing, particularly maybe in a big storm event, if we ever get one again, compared to the risk of failure for the landscaping that we approved, and maybe, I don't know what would happen to the spa, but maybe it overflows or drainage breaks from it or something like that, I'm not really sure. But I'm trying to evaluate how different the pool is with this drainage system being the key part there, and what we've already approved.
Correct, that's actually a good question. And I, in my opinion, the placement of the pool actually improves overall stability of the slope because it's no longer allowing water to percolate into the soils and add weight to the soils, which increases the instability potentially. So if you have a pool that's present and it's supported by piles, and it's also a trap for water, that water collects in the peak storm, it could be let out at a lower rate once the storm's passed, is really, in essence, similar to a bio-retention type system, even though it's not planned as such. But plants that are removed and replaced with a pool actually acts as a net benefit to the slope overall since the pool's now supported with piles and distributing the weight of that earth material that's been removed and now replaced with water, but distributing that weight and setting the center of gravity lower in elevation, so the overall stability of the slope increases. So despite Chair Lodge's comments about fracturing the shale, I mean, that's, that shale's all along the coastline there, so it's the same material that everybody's built on. Everybody has pools that built along the coast is in that Monterey shale. And as long as it's supported, you're going to have a net benefit to the slope.
Okay, thank you. And that was the only question I had for you, but I do have a follow-up question for Mr. Vincent, and I'm not even sure if it's a question that it's appropriate for you to answer, but I'm going to, you can tell me that if that's the case. So we have the speaker, Ms. Bastian, I think it's, that lives below. And I just, I don't, I know that this project itself would be appealable, and that's one avenue for any applicant. But in addition to this, where there may be a potential breach in the integrity of the slope potentially caused by or at least on this site's property or in their, in this retaining wall that exists, what avenues exist for the property owner below who either is the subject of that because they're lower? Or even if there hasn't been a failure, but there's concern that there might be a failure?
I don't need more hypothetical.
Okay.
The, it would be inappropriate for me to provide legal advice for a person as to what avenues there are to respond to a hypothetical. However, I'll answer the question this way. The Civil Code of California requires all property owners to maintain their property in a reasonable fashion. The converse to that is, if you don't, if you fail to maintain your property in a reasonable fashion, that is the definition of negligence. And a property, if an adjacent property owner is injured by your negligence, you're liable for that to them. That's the answer.
Okay, so basically, it would be a private matter at that point? Okay, all right, thank you. And just, those are the only two. And just, those are the, only two questions I had as follow-ups, and I do have a couple of comments when we get to that point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? I have a couple more questions myself, it may be for Mr. Becker, or, and I'd like Mr. Stuffer to also comment, and that is, in the structural plans we got here, it appears that the only reinforcement in these forty-foot-deep caissons is two number-five rebars, is that, is that the only structural reinforcement that's going into these caissons? I'm looking at sheet S2 of the structural plans that we were given.
I believe that has just not been, the design's just not complete yet, there'll be, there'll be a normal cage in-
Normally, it's a cage that goes down there, otherwise, you don't have much structural integrity of the caisson, right?
Yeah, I saw that comment, and it looked like, too, I think those are just a placeholder, I think the engineer just hasn't finished the design there yet.
Okay, is that, concur?
Mr. Chair, yeah, we don't, the city doesn't look at that level of engineering detail at this point, we look at the kind of scope and approach, and make sure that that's an appropriate scope and approach, and then we check the details in building plan check.
So, the concept, we would be approving the concept, that there would be caissons that would be structurally engineered to meet the loads that they're required to carry?
California Building Standards Code.
We can take your word to the bank.
Yes, you can.
Okay, and follow-up on something that Commissioner Campanella asked, and that is, the actual physical drilling of these caissons, the normal caisson drill rig, especially if you're something that's two and a half feet in diameter, is a pretty hefty piece of equipment, and being on the site the other day, and it's the third time we've been on the site here in the last couple of years, I don't really see where the access is going to come for that size piece of equipment, and I'm pretty familiar with caisson drilling, because I had thirty-two caissons put under my home when it was rebuilt after the T-fire, and I know John Carter, who did the work on my house before the T-fire, and the piece of equipment was humongous, to drill those holes, so how do you get it physically on the site without disturbing the neighborhood?
All right, it's a good question, and it is hard to fathom that kind of drilling, considering the size of equipment's necessary for drilling small holes for water wells, equipment's very large, and yet we end up with a little twelve-inch diameter hole in the end, but in our case, the same equipment that was provided for the 1998 repair of the retaining wall and slope there, would be the same concept as a limited-access equipment that was provided by John Carter Incorporated in 1998, would likely be the same type of approach today, with the same company perhaps, but there's other companies like EGR and so forth that have these limited-access equipment that actually can get around that structure and do these boreholes without impacting the slopes, or the walls, or anything else.
Even, even with talking about the diameter and the depth we're talking about, forty is a pretty deep hole.
Yes, I mean, they're, the limited-access equipment's pretty amazing, we've, we could do quite a bit of support for walls and slopes that are, that you could barely walk on, it's pretty amazing.
And it's not going to disrupt the neighborhood?
No, definitely not, yeah.
Okay, well, another question along the lines of just, yes, sir.
From personal experience many years ago, but John Carter invented this ability to put this machine underneath an overhang, so he didn't have to just, you know, take apart the roof, but I know that we would attach these things to the foundation, the foundation is the reason that we're doing this, so it did not vibrate enough to harm the house that we're trying to save, so I do know it works right up against the foundation, and it's a very small machine, you can get in anywhere, and something that he just absolutely-
I know they have different machinery for different applications, but when we started talking about the diameter and depth of these holes, normally, they use some pretty big machinery, and I'm, my concern isn't how you do it, you're going to pay money, you're going to do it, my concern is, what impact it's going to have on the neighborhood?
I just, I know it would have very limited to the neighborhood, because I know from personal experience that we could get these little machines in there, we could drill a hole that was twenty-four inches wide and go down forever, we'd just keep adding six-inch pipe, and it's not even shaking the house, so I'm sure that John has perfected his invention as-
As long as we can be assured that the neighborhood's going to be protected.
Yeah, well, that's just my own personal comment, having actually done that, so I'd add that.
And along that same line is, apparently, based upon what Mr. Becker told us before, there's going to be an export of about two-hundred-and-five tons of material, normally, when we get a staff report that has any grading plan, we get a cut-and-fill estimate, that's a lot of export, and there's nothing in the staff report that talks about it, there's nothing in the staff, in the conditions, other than the normal boilerplate, that any impact to the street's got to have a street encroachment permitted from Public Works, but shouldn't we be talking a little bit more about the amount of export that's going to be involved with this, both the material in the pool and the amount coming out of those forty-foot-deep holes?
Chair Thompson, the amount of cubic yards, cubic yards that is being excavated from the site is, on the plans shown out, is thirty cubic yards.
Total of thirty cubic yards?
Thirty cubic yards is what they've applied for, and it's on the plans, and normally, if it was a big project with a lot of, we would say, you know, we'd call out the amount of cut, the amount of fill, export, but it was only thirty cubic yards for a four-hundred-and-fifty square foot pool, so I apologize for not putting a section in the staff report, but we'll see what they say.
Well, once again, my concern is for the impact to the neighborhood.
The private street, and all of these houses-
It is, but it's still got neighbors.
And they've all gone through construction sequentially, and they, they've all had to deal with each other going through construction every week.
Mr. Chair, planning commissioners, yeah, so actually, we did have thirty cubic yards on the site plan, but there was an oversight on our part that usually you get the amount of earth removed from the pool contractor, which we didn't, we didn't get that added to the plan, so it's an extra ninety, ninety cubic yards for the full construction installation for the pool and the piles and all of that, and we did confirm with the contractor that's on site right now, that's been maneuvering a lot of equipment for the house construction going on, and there is a piece of equipment that is about six feet wide that fits onto the site and can drill the depth and the width of the piles that we're talking about, so he confirmed that, you know, I don't know what it's called, or exactly what it looks like, but he confirmed that there is something like that, then in terms of moving the dirt in and out of the site, very similar to, like a garbage truck size, truck is what they would use, where they can come down, fill over the, you know, there's an existing wall, I think, that you saw at the far end, they can fill over the wall, and they're actually able to turn around in the driveway portion that's just past the harbor property turnaround and go back out, and there might be a few days where there's a closure in the road, just if they have multiple trucks there, but, you know, I think it would be for four hours at a time, a few times, maybe during the shotcrete, maybe when they're pouring, you know, like, but a few select times that can be coordinated with the neighbor, but I think that had to happen, too, when they, when they stabilized the slope up at the Sealed Edge Lane entrance, because that blocked off a big portion of the road on the upper end, and when they had equipment in during certain days, I think they had to block that out and let the neighbors know as well, so they do have to coordinate, given that it is just a limited, one-access, private lane.
Yeah, well, I would entreat everybody working on the project to take their neighbors into consideration there, because that is a very constrained street, and we had trouble getting the city van in there, let alone a truck hauling a bunch of dirt and equipment and so forth.
Yeah, I understand.
Not to make any disparaging comments, Kelly, but it was narrow.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, time for comments, any commissioners have comments before we see how we go on this? Commissioner Pujol.
Thank you, okay. This has been a really interesting project for really, basically, accessory kind of use on a, on a site, I think I will start by saying, when all is said and done, and weighing all the different pieces together, really, it comes down to me for this, one is, this is an amendment to a project that we already approved, the project that we already approved was quite substantial as well, and I know that we also looked carefully, I know I looked carefully at the geologic reports at the time, and had a lot of questions about the retaining wall and whatnot at the time, too, and now we're even adding more to the area that had been redeveloped, in terms of the area between where the original house and now revised house is, and the retaining wall where the top of bluff is, but it is an amendment to what we approved, it's not a brand-new project, and, and the issues for me are all about the bluff protection and the geologic stability and vulnerability for this, and when I look at the scale of the project and those two very important issues, and as most of you may be aware, here, when we've had these projects in the past, I am very inquisitive and careful in looking at anything that's got to do with the coastal bluffs, but on this particular site, what I find myself kind of settling in on is this, it's already not a natural slope, it's already a highly-engineered site, highly-developed in an area, if I had a magic wand, where maybe it wouldn't have been, because it's a lot of even below bluff development, it's already got a private road, turnarounds, the house is engineered, the wall is engineered, the pool would be proposed to be engineered, the house below sits, maybe even on the bluff face, I'm not sure, so we're not working with a natural circumstance here, and we're working with something that's already very engineered, and so when you look at the scale of this request, and the overall development that's already there, I find myself really needing to look at how we can best assure that this particular pool proposer, proposal doesn't exacerbate any of the conditions on this site for the slope and the property owner below, and, and I have come down to two parts in that, that have continued to, I think, concerning beyond what is already proposed and the conditions and all the very good information that Mr. Simmons has provided, which I, I find most of all those answers to our questions have been very satisfactorily responded to by, by him as the geologist, but there are two parts, I feel there's some vulnerability during the construction and immediate post-construction time period, and, and I think that the best thing we could do, because there is a little vulnerability, I'm not saying it's high vulnerability, but yet there is, because you're opening up that area, and it's so close to the existing retaining law, wall, so I think that I would propose two things, if it's feasible, and if the commissioners would feel to weigh in on that, and that is, I didn't see a condition saying that all the work should be done during a dry season, which probably isn't too difficult right now in the middle of a drought to accomplish, but yet, if there's any chance of, you know, having a gaping hole, and then having it fill up with water, because it's during, you know, potentially rainy season, I don't think that's a good thing, and then also, the proximity to the existing wall and what the construction aspects of the pool would do to it, and so I think that if there were some monitoring, like mid-construction monitoring, that would look at the integrity of the wall as construction takes place, and then again, perhaps, another look at that wall immediately, maybe after the pool is filled with water and that work is done, and then maybe perhaps six months later, or something like that, I mean, to me, that would give some assurance that what we hear will be accomplished actually, and protects the wall, will actually protect the integrity of that wall, and so that would be my recommendation on the project.
Okay, good points, Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think I heard support there, so I, too, will be supporting the project, I actually think, and with all respect to the downhill neighbor, I, from what I've heard today, I think the project actually makes the safety on the slope better than it is now, I'd be much more worried now if we had a huge rain this winter than I would after the project was, was done, I'd be in your shoes, the same way, looking uphill, going, I want the assurances of adjacent flat lots, but that's not where you all have chosen to live, so I just think that just kind of comes with the territory, I think you've done a great job, I don't think it's anything near a normal pool, the way it's being described with the, both the supports down all the way past the lower house foundation level, and the girders enveloping the pool structure, I think it's kind of amazing, so I won't have any problem supporting the project, I don't have any problem with staff crafting the language for those two points that I heard Commissioner Pujol mention, there's also a revision in E2 to strike out a date, and then I've had my best counsel working on C2, and if he's ready to share a follow-up to what a, what the post-action would be if there was an observed leakage out of that French drain outlet, I'd be interested in hearing that now for inclusion.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'd recommend that this proposed condition would not be actually found in Section C, but it would be contained in Section B, which would be a recorded condition of the property, since it would, this would be a prospective condition regarding the maintenance or response if a leak is observed from the pool drain that was described in the application, so this is concerning the French drain, and Commissioner Jordan's comments about what would be the response if water was observed coming out of that French drain, what should the property owner do in that circumstance? Upon the observation of a leak from the French drain, property owner shall conduct an investigation by appropriate professionals, who will prepare a report that will be submitted to the chief building official regarding the, and detailing the results of the investigation and recommending a response, if the investigation determines that a condition threatens the stability of the pool foundation or the retaining wall foundation, the pool shall be drained by truck until repairs have been affected and the stability of the foundation systems is again confirmed to the satisfaction of the chief building official.
I almost could have done that well, maybe, but-
That's probably exactly what you would have said, right?
Exactly, so, you know, I hate coming up with something up here, is, is the team down there okay with that addition, nodded heads, okay, so that would be my input, Commissioner Pujol's two points, and then those two points for an eventual inclusion in the conditions, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, first, I want to address comments that have been made about the drought, because we really didn't discuss that today, but members of the public have expressed their opinions and concerns, and so in revisiting, I just want to explain for myself, in revisiting our current stage-three drought regulations, and specifically what the council, the scope that the council has directed staff to enforce, and Ms. Calarte was, was kind enough to give me her interpretation, I realize that our, that our hands are tied around the, the opposition to new pools at this time, that would necessarily be my path, however, the council has spoken, so it's really a personal judgment as to whether or not someone wants to, in light of the drought, still install a pool, spa, anything like that, so I, I don't feel that I have the authority to deny the application on that basis. Let me say, though, and- Let me say, though, and it's too bad that Commissioner Lodge had to leave, I have some similar concerns to hers. When I look at the importance of bluff-top protection, geologic stability, vulnerability, and I do respect Mr. Simmons greatly and your opinions, however, between the Coastal Act and our own policies, even our general plan safety element, coastal bluff-top development policies that are in our package today in Exhibit E, I just don't feel, quite frankly, that we are following and honoring these policies that have been vetted by a planning commission, not all the commissioners currently on this commission were present, I was, and the city council in 2011, in supporting our general plan, unanimously approving our general plan, which includes these policies. So, and I greatly respect my fellow commissioner, Ms. Pujol, I think as most people know, but let me just say something that's going to be a little different than one of Ms. Pujol's comments. Yes, this area, this specific site, is highly engineered. It's highly engineered because, if not propped up both the way it has been and with further extraordinary engineering to put a pool on the bluff top, and if left to its own natural devices, I think it would fall down, and probably this and Ms. Bastian's home would be falling down, especially with what's stated right here in our policy S24B, which talks about accelerated rates of erosion, estimated as of 2008, an average 12 inches per year. These are in the documents we have in our own package today to be considered. 12 inches per year, potentially accelerating to 1 to 3 feet per year in the city of Santa Barbara with expected climate change. So I just want to say that we either establish policy and really seriously consider policy or not have the policies on the books. And so I feel that I have to honor consideration of the policies that have been approved by the planning commission and the city council. And it's therefore, I don't want to say with reluctance, but I'm sorry, Mr. Harbor, I just won't be able to support your proposal to install the pool. And it looks like Commissioner Lodge and I are in the minority, but that's where I need to come out on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Well, I think we've thoroughly scrubbed this thing today. I tell you, I learned a lot about building a pool on soil that might not like a pool. It has actual personal application because, believe it or not, my uphill neighbor has an easement from me to build a pool on the hillside above my house. And I often wondered if they actually did build a pool there, what was the vulnerability of my house? Now, I know you can build it without being that worried about it. Anyway, I'd be looking for a motion to either approve or deny the application per the staff report. Commissioner Jordan.
Okay. So I'll move to approve the project and grant the coastal development permit, making the findings as found in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval with the following revisions. There was a, I'm sure I'm going to goof this up, so you're going to have to go back to the earlier conversation we had, but there was a date revision in E2. There is a section to be added to in Section B per Mr. Vincent's language related to what to do if a leak is observed. And then, Commissioner Pujol, you can help me if I don't articulate this well, but there was a language for construction monitoring with a focus on integrity of the existing retaining wall, and then a requirement that either the project is completed in dry season or also be included in construction monitoring to make sure that there is no accumulation of water and erosion taking place.
Okay. Do we have a second? Commissioner Pujol?
Let's see. I have a slight clarification to the condition, but I guess I could second it for then discuss it, or...
Okay.
Is that the way?
You might state what it is.
Okay, all right. So for the monitoring condition, and that was pretty good, Mr. Jordan, in terms of phrasing that, but I would add that the monitoring of the integrity of the existing retaining wall specifically be looked at during construction, post-filling the pool, and in approximately six months following, and that review be done by a licensed geologist, and that letter to the effect of the results of that be submitted to the city.
Is that acceptable?
Yes. So, can I, is it a geologist, the applicant, would be the proper party? Okay. Yep, that works for me then, too.
Okay, with that, I would...
Any...
Second, or...
Commissioner, and is that a second?
I think I seconded, I seconded, yeah.
Commissioner Pujol, second. Commissioner Campanella, discussion?
Discussion, all right. I had made the comment before that I would like to see that if there's any damage or rebuilding necessary to the existing wall, not just during construction but down the road, that there's a condition that makes the applicant responsible for rebuilding that wall in its current state, regardless of the fact that there is another structural caissons that are done with the pool. I want to make sure that it gets rebuilt. And I guess I go to Mr. Vincent to see what...
Where would you put that? Do you have a recommended condition?
No, I don't.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campanella, I, the property owner already has a legal obligation to respond if there is damage to these retaining systems. These retaining systems are holding up, are currently holding up his house site and will hold up his home. If this application is approved, it will hold up, it will continue to hold up the house site, the pool will, I guess presumably, be propped up on its own foundation system. To the extent that those are necessary to, you know, they've been deemed necessary to hold up this site, he would have an obligation to continue to maintain them. If they became, if they were damaged to a point where they were failing, he'd have to respond to that. I don't know, I sit here, I don't know what kind of, you know, what would get to that point. If you see a facial crack, does that mean that the system has to be rebuilt? I mean, I'm not going to hire Mr. Simmons right now, but it seems like everybody else has.
Well, I think you're clarifying that the, assuming there was a pool and no pool, this existing wall that's there now is what's supporting the structure, what's allowing it to be 15-foot back as recommended by the structural engineer, by the geologist. The pool itself is a separate issue, if we agree with that. The pool is standalone, it's being supported by itself, and theoretically, it's not having any impact on the wall, or should not have any impact on the wall that's currently in place supporting the house. It's of and by itself, if we agree. So I'm satisfied with your explanation. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No with Ms. Lodge and abstention.
Okay. The project is approved, vote of five to one, and one abstention. The project approval is appealable to city council within 10 calendar days. Thank you all for bearing with all of the questions, and we've all learned a lot. And like I said when we started this, I think it's better to get all these issues on the table early rather than later.
Absolutely. I just want to thank you for a very thoughtful and comprehensive review.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, going on to our final items on the agenda, administrative agenda. Staff hearing officer report.
So how many items did we have today?
We had a total of two.
Two? Okay. So we didn't have a new record yesterday, but 32 minutes for two items at the show. So I'm going to continue to report that as long as we go this long. Just two quick items, just modifications that were built into the existing components of the property, nothing out of the ordinary. So they have a couple more weeks, they have a full schedule, there's actually six items on the agenda, so I won't be reporting back the time allotment on that one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Monday of this week, I attended the Water Commission hearing, and there are some notable readouts from that. First, I want to say that the city, with its significant commitment to conservation, we had an average of 30% conservation in May, so we continue to be one of the leading communities in the state in the area of water conservation.
So I can start taking a shower again?
Yes, yes, if you would please. Since we sit so close together on the dais. Okay, back to the Water Commission. So Storage Unit 1, which I think many know is a significant water storage unit for us, is actually seeing an increase in chlorides, and this is of concern to Mr. Hagmark, and believes it's due to the fact that we're heavily tapping that water storage unit for our aquifer needs. And we're starting to see seawater intrusion, which staff is just getting on right away, and so they're going to keep everyone apprised of that. In terms of how bad is the drought, yes, we're in a Stage III, but let me also share, as Mr. Hagmark did, that we are 10 inches drier than the most previous drought from 1987 to 90, which many were here in Santa Barbara and experienced. 10 inches drier than that point, which of course triggered the construction and temporary use of our D-SAL facility. Some may also not be aware, or perhaps appreciative, of the city of Santa Barbara water rates. So I just want to tell you, as reported at the Water Commission hearing, Carpinteria has the highest water rates, followed by Galida, then Monosito, and Santa Barbara is last in terms of the least expensive of the water rates. So I think we should be appreciative of that. I also want to report out for those who are looking to invest in gray water systems, that many may not know that the city does not require permits for gray water systems. That's been a topic of inquiry and discussion. Now on to the D-SAL plant itself. We have contracted with IDE Americas, Inc. They are the company affiliated with the Carlsbad D-SAL Plant Construction. Corolo Engineers is engineering our facility, and here's the unfortunate news. The cost, the price tag has increased. It is now estimated at $53,739,769, and that is largely due to what was discovered by our contractors as fairly extensive unusable technology in our current D-SAL plant because of how much the technology has changed in the industry. So we cannot use much of the older equipment. It's not realistic, and so we are having to replace that as part of the overall price tag. Also, here's, let me, I'm going back and forth between kind of the good, the bad, and the ugly. So here is some other good news, though, in terms of the way our staff has structured the contract with the contractors, and that is that we're looking to save as much electricity as possible. So in our contract, it states that if the contractor goes over a certain kilowatt per acre foot used, they will absorb the cost difference in exceeding the electricity output. So I thought that was very enlightened and important to share. And I think that's it on the Water Commission. I'll be brief today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I attended the downtown parking committee meeting this morning. Of interest, I think, is there is now real-time parking availability by going on your cellphone or your iPhone to the city's website. On downtown parking, there's a link to real-time parking availability, and you could pull up every parking lot and see how many spaces are available at that time, and also get directions on how to get to each one. And the idea is to try to help the visitors, you know, find out where to go at various times of the day. It's in a process, it'll continue to be refined with comments, but it's really interesting seeing how, to the moment, it is. And if you haven't done so, just take a look and see how it works, really, and needed, to try to efficiently park people who are not familiar with the parking situation here in town. The other item is on the, what's called the Crescent Crossing by the habit, Embarra Habit, that had been fenced off for a while. Downtown parking has agreed with staff on a suggested relocation down to the depot by the train station. There's a triangular grass area right next to the kiosk and next to the station that has been suggested for it, and the arts commissions are in favor as well. The issue has to be cleared by HLC, which at the moment is not in favor of moving to that location. So there's going to be, I guess, discussion between both bodies on that. I'll leave it at that, on that one. On the ABR, I didn't really, I probably didn't talk about it last week, I wasn't in a condition to talk about anything else, but on the ABR, at the meeting of the 26th, several of the AUD projects moved along in process. Of note, we had received at lunch meeting a memo that staff had sent to the two design boards relative to a backup explanation on the purpose of the AUD, and how to consider that in balancing with other priorities and judgments that they make. Interestingly, on 1818 Castillo, when it was reviewed at this meeting, both the chair and one of the commissioners actually started quoting it as they went through their deliberations and findings. So they actually used it as a tool to see, at the same time as they were going through compatibility, et cetera, they were trying to tick off, did it comply with the general plan, et cetera. So it was used as a tool at that particular meeting. This week, an item that had been suspended for about a year in art and public places in the funk zone, where this is where walls would be painted by collaboration with the artist and the property owner. There had been discussions on what ABR's approval process was going to be of this in the degree, but the guidelines were finalized where the ABR would approve specific locations in the funk zone, and that was done, ten specific locations. And ABR would also approve whether you can use the entire side of the building or wall, corner to corner, or maybe it was more appropriate to isolate it in a certain spot, also whether it was impacting landscaping and things like that. But then beyond it, it was up to the actual property owner and the artist to come up with a design, subject to the Arts Fund, which is located down there, sort of being the oversight. Leave it up to them to make sure that it's being done right. And of interest is the greenery, the old greenery tower was approved for wall-to-wall, so it, corner to corner. So it'd be interesting to see how that starts. The purpose, of course, is to identify, here's the funk zone and here's the arts zone. One of the comments made by the Arts Fund was that there was, I don't know which one it is, there's a, a work is up now, but it's actually on the internet, and people, he's got feedback that people are actually stopping, you know, as they travel up and down the coast to take a picture of it. It's very popular, and it's got a lot of play. So I think this is really a little free-form, but also being reviewed and very needed to keep the idea of the funk zone being for artists established and brought out to the community. So that was a good thing to hear yesterday. Thank you. Monday.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, then, we'll be adjourned until next week.